Limiting the size of public gatherings of individuals until further notice. Furthermore, the CDC has issued guidelines to limit the gatherings of groups. The city planning board intends to meet on a regular schedule and meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meeting Act by utilizing teleconferencing and video systems. Public participation at public meetings has been revised and the public may participate through a conference call and system and video. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call video or video through the phone numbers and access codes. Hold on, where was I? At transmitting the change of location notice sent to the home news Tribune and Star Ledger and posted in the back desk of the old City Hall visible to the public through the windows. More professionals will also be available via conference call during this meeting as well. All parties on the conference call will have the opportunity to hear the planning board meeting during the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment. All callers from the public will be muted and the board will not be able to hear any comment through the conference call system. During the public comment periods, those on the conference call and lines who have interest in addressing the board will first be organized by last name and then called upon to speak. After all organized members of the public speak, the process will happen again until all the public has had an opportunity to speak once for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. A timer will chime at the completion of each five minute period and I will notify you that time has expired. Public needing assistance accessing the call number should call Planning Department at seven three three seven four five five zero five zero.
Second.
Okay, I will now unmute the lines to do roll call for the board. So if everyone who is not, if I need to speak, if you can promptly mute yourselves after I unmute, or if you can remain quiet, I would sincerely appreciate it. Thank you. Let's see. Bit of a technical difficulty. Bob, I see that you're speaking, but I can't, I can't quite hear you.
I'm not speaking.
Oh, well, it like maybe like popped saying that you were, that you were speaking.
I had the ability to unmute, so I unmuted.
Yes, um, I'm having trouble unmuting the public call in line. Give me one second. We'll, we're gonna need to take a couple of minutes for, for technical difficulties. I apologize.
Yeah, is this a planning board meeting?
Hello?
Yes, it is. We're resolving some technical issues at the moment, so just bear with us. Sorry.
Thank you.
and unmuting occurs in these meetings. To that end, the board members of ours that are on the phone will need to manually unmute themselves using the star six code for the purposes of roll call, comments, voting, et cetera. And that will similarly apply to the members of the public who wish to speak during public comment, cross-examination, et cetera. So we'll, I'll reiterate that during the open public notice, but it is star six to self-mute or to self-unmute if you are on a telephone. So that is, is the chair there? Well, is our, our acting chair for the meeting available and unmuted? Ms. Sikora Ludwig?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm here.
All right. If, if you may instruct me to do the roll call.
Oh, yes, of course. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Yelitza Checo?
Here.
Dale Vickers? Dale Vickers, if you are on telephone, you need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Here.
Thank you. Suzanne Sikora Ludwig?
Here.
Krista Latella is absent. Ryan Berger?
Here.
Diana Lopez is absent. Bob Cardica?
Here.
John Petrolino?
Here.
George Shidid absent. Manuel Castaneda is absent. And Jeff Crum is absent. And Ms. Sikora Ludwig will once again be our, our acting chair for the meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Ital?
That's correct.
All right.
Thank you, Dan. Can you please read the Open Public Meeting Act?
Certainly. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time, place, and manner of all public meetings of the planning board of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk and placed on appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back desk of the old City Hall visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey and has been transmitted to official newspapers for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger. Additionally, a change of location notice of the time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the board secretary as required by law and also posted in the back desk of the old City Hall visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey and has been transmitted to official newspapers for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings of individuals until further notice. Furthermore, the CDC has issued guidelines to limit gatherings of groups. The city planning board intends to meet on a regular schedule and meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meeting Act by utilizing teleconferencing systems. Public participation at public meetings has been revised and the public may participate through a conference call or video system. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call or video system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the above notice to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted in the back desk of the old City Hall visible to the public through the windows. More professionals will also be available via conference call and video during this meeting as well. All parties on the conference call will have the opportunity to hear the planning board meeting during the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment. All callers from the public will be muted and the board will not be able to hear any public comments through the conference call system. During the public comment periods, I will first read public comments issued to the board, and though, and then those on the conference call and lines who have interest in addressing the board will be organized by last name and then called upon to speak. After all organized members of the public speak, the process will happen again until all the public has had an opportunity to speak once and for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting. A timer will chime at the completion of each five minute period and I will notify you that time has expired. Public needing assistance accessing the call number should call the Planning Department at seven three two seven four five five zero five zero. And once again, if anyone is on a phone and needs to mute themselves or unmute themselves, star six on your phone will unmute or remute yourself as necessary.
Thank you. Can you please, everyone please stand for a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thank you. And I believe all members of the board will be the minutes from the October 5th, 2020 planning board meeting. If there are no questions or concerns, a motion to approve would be in order.
So for the purposes of the October 5th meeting, Ms. Checo, Mr. Vickers, Ms. Sikora Ludwig, Mr. Cardica, Mr. Petrolino are...
I motioned to approve.
Was that Bob? Barbara, did you motion? Who motioned?
Yes, I made a motion to approve.
All right. Bob Cardica, motion to approve. John Petrolino's...
I did.
Yes, we got you, Bob.
Bob Cardica did. Are you hearing me?
Yes, yes, I can. Can you hear me? All right. Yelitza Checo?
Yes.
Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Suzanne Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Bob Cardica?
Yes, I can.
Okay. John Petrolino?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. And tonight we have no resolutions. I believe we're gonna do the resolution at the next planning board meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Dominguez?
In the interest of time, we can push those aside to the, to the phone.
Yes.
Okay. And, okay, before I introduce the application for the public hearing, I just want to, I have a couple of things I want to say that tonight we're gonna hear from the third and final witness of the applicant, after which the board, professionals, and members of the public will have an opportunity for cross-examination relative to the aforementioned testimony only. Then we will hear closing remarks followed by an additional opportunity for comment on this application only by professional, board members, and the public prior to any action. Now, we take all comments and the right to make them as a very important part of this process. It is evident in the willingness of the board to extend the time of our last meeting to ensure a fair process for everyone with reasonable opportunity for comment. We will continue to be fair and generous with our time if it is needed so that each one of you has the same opportunity again this evening. Please be mindful and respectful of everyone involved, professional, voluntary board members, and public alike. Disrespectful language and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The application on the agenda tonight is the Cancer Pavilion Redevelopment Associates LLC, 165 Somerset Street, Block 51, lot 2.01 PB 2020-11. Preliminary and final site plan application to construct an 11-story, 519,500 gross square foot building, Rutgers Cancer Institute of New Jersey Cancer Pavilion, to house outpatient and inpatient care, research facilities, and administrative space associated with RWJ Barnabas Health and Rutgers. No variances are required. The site is located in the Healthcare Research Pavilion Redevelopment Plan area. And Mr. Liebling, please go ahead with your witness.
Madam Chair, before Mr. Liebling starts, this is Arvin Ital, the board attorney. If I may inquire from our board secretary, if Mr. Petrolino has had an opportunity to review the transcript and has signed a certification or will sign a certification to getting his done sent?
Dan, do you have that information?
All right. Sorry, I was muted. I have, I have in fact received a certification from Mr. Petrolino that he has read the transcript. I will also defer to Mr. Petrolino if he'd like to also verify that that is correct on the record.
Okay, hearing none, Mr. Liebling. Can you please proceed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Charles Cradaville, I did want to raise a few objections and a point of order. I want to understand who is sitting on the board for this application. Is Mr. Berger no longer participating in this?
He is here, but Mr. Cradaville, I have a, I don't believe that you, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ital, but does an object or pro se have any more special opportunity to speak than general public?
Now, Madam Chair, we have gone through roll calls, so all individuals that are present have been accounted for. In terms of whether this board has jurisdiction to hear the application, we've already begun the application, so now you've made a ruling that the application will continue, and Mr. Liebling, I believe, has the privilege at this point.
Thank you. If you have any objections, you can make them in the comment portion of the meeting, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay, well, for the record, Mr. Ital did not be ruling on these matters. He, his law firm is owned by Bob Smith, and Bob Smith is a supporter of this development project. So I think that there's a fatal conflict of interest at play here, and Mr. Berger, I did not hear him...
You can make these comments, you can make these comments, you can address them in the public portion of the meeting. We're gonna proceed with the application now. Thank you.
Okay. Why wasn't Mr. Berger called on to vote on the minutes of the meeting? If he's here tonight, why didn't he, why wasn't he asked to vote on the meeting minutes? How did he vote on the meeting minutes? Mr. Cradaville, Ryan Berger was not in attendance for that meeting, so he did not vote on those minutes, but he has, he is here for roll talk. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Liebling, now you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our hearing on October 19th, we presented our first two expert witnesses, our civil engineer and our architect, to give their testimony regarding the project, or cross-examined by all interested members of the public. Tonight, we have our final witness, Dan Disario of Langin, our traffic engineer. Dan?
Good evening.
Yeah. Dan Dominguez, do you swear, do you swear him in?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Mr. Disario, do you swear or affirm? Oh, well, please put your name on the record.
Certainly. Dan, D-A-N, Disario, D-I-S-A-R-I-O.
Disario, do you swear or affirm to the whole truth or nothing but the first?
I do.
Floor is yours.
Mr. Liebling, if I may... Advise the board as to your role in this project?
Mr. Liebling?
Yes.
Are you an expert in the area of traffic engineering?
Yes, I, I planned to do that. I wanted him to first state what, what he actually, how his involvement was, and then, and then qualify him for that purpose.
If I may, Mr. Disario, you've appeared before this board in a number of occasions, have you not?
I have.
And the last time you appeared before this board, if I'm not mistaken, was earlier this year?
It was.
And since the last time you were accepted as an expert in the area of traffic engineering by the board, have your credentials changed anyway?
They have not.
And, Mr. Liebling, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there won't be a need to have his, his CV put on the record if the chair recognizes him as an expert.
So recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Dan, so you, your, your role in this, for this project was also as a traffic engineer?
Correct.
Okay. And as you stated, your qualifications have not changed. Could you please present your, your summary of your conclusions from your investigation?
Certainly. As part of the site plan application for this project, we prepared a traffic impact study dated October 9th, 2020, which is part of the submission package that hopefully every member has received. That study encapsulates our efforts with respect to identifying not only how much traffic would be generated by what's before the board this evening, but associated impacts as well. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through every detail of that study. As Mr. Liebling has suggested, I will go over some of the highlights, but I would be happy to answer any questions the board and/or the public has as it relates to that To establish existing conditions by way of traffic volumes in the area, we conducted traffic counts on Tuesday, April 30th of 2019. And we conducted the counts at that time because we were informed that at some point there would be a cancer pavilion application somewhere in the general vicinity of what is now the specific site that we're discussing this evening. So we thought it was prudent at that time to conduct traffic counts because we wanted to capture when Rutgers was in session. As we all know, traffic is different in this city when Rutgers is in session versus not. So we conducted traffic counts. I think someone, someone may not be on mute, so we're getting a little feedback. Yeah, it seems to resolve itself. We conducted traffic counts at eight intersections, essentially all the intersections that cordon off and surround the subject site. They extended from the Eastern Avenue corridor at the Hamilton Street and Somerset Street intersections west to the Hamilton Street and Division Street, as well as Division Street and Somerset Street intersections, and then the intersections that are in between, which is Hamilton Street and Gildan Street, excuse me, Hardenberg and Gildan Street, Hardenberg and Somerset Street, as well as Condit Street and Eastern Avenue, and Condit Street and Hardenberg Street. So effectively, all the intersections that surround this subject property, we did counts for. The counts were conducted specifically from 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and that's a little earlier than typical. Typically, you do counts between 7:00 and 9:00, but we wanted to account for and capture the traffic in the area that's, to an extent, influenced by the medical campus, and oftentimes, and the medical campus is no different. In this instance, the shift changes that occur in terms of nursing staff usually happen 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, so we wanted to be sure to capture that. And we did counts as well from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. for similar reasons. The afternoon shift change usually occurs around 2:30 to 3 o'clock. Based on those counts, we identified that overall, the highest hourly volumes recorded during those periods occurred in the morning from 7:45 to 8:45, and in the evening from 4:45 to 5:45. Those volumes that we identified during those peak hours established the basis for the study that we prepared. We've assumed that this project would be open and operational by 2024, and to account for increases in overall traffic in the area, we applied a 1% per year compounded annual growth rate. So effectively, from 2019 to 2024, we increased the existing peak hour volumes by 5%. And what that means is that every single movement at every intersection that we did counts at, we've increased by 5%. Now, there may be specific development projects that are under construction. Most notably, there is a residential project that my office did work on at the northwest corner of Easton and Hamilton Street, but we feel that accounting for specific projects is not warranted in this particular instance because we've accounted for the background traffic growth, and we feel it's very conservative. As it relates to identifying how much traffic this cancer pavilion will generate, we've conducted estimates based on essentially two methods. The first is this cancer pavilion will have an inpatient component, so there will be beds, and we used published trip rates by the Institute of Transportation Engineers and their publication Trip Generation Manual, which is in its 10th edition, to estimate how much traffic would be associated with that inpatient component. Using round numbers for the proposed 96 beds during that AM peak hour, 150 trips would come in, 60 would leave, for a total two-way of 210 trips. Again, these are round numbers. They differ a little bit from the specific numbers in this study. The 96 beds in the evening peak hour would generate 50 trips coming in, 130 trips leaving, for a total two-way of 180 trips, again, during that evening peak hour. To identify and estimate the amount of traffic for what I'll call the outpatient component of this cancer pavilion, we looked at research counts that we've done at the Memorial Sloan-Kettering Facility in Basking Ridge. Essentially, they're providing the same type of outpatient services that is proposed before the board this evening with this cancer pavilion. Based on those research counts, we would estimate that the cancer pavilion outpatient component, again, in round numbers, would generate 185 trips coming in, 15 leaving, for a total two-way of 200 trips during that morning peak hour, 20 coming in, 135 exiting, for a total two-way of 155 during the weekday evening peak hour. Now, we've conservatively not accounted for in our analysis, the fact that there are some existing buildings and a parking lot that would be removed as part of this project if the board was inclined to grant approval. So we did not take any credit for the existing traffic that's being generated currently because of those uses that will be removed. We've assumed that all of the estimated trips would be by vehicle, by passenger cars. We've assumed no mass transit usage, even though the city is well-served by transit, not only in terms of rail, but also busing. And we've assumed that this cancer pavilion, for purposes of estimating trip generation, is a completely standalone facility. We've assumed no interaction with the existing Cancer Institute building, nor any interaction with Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, even though we know that there will be interaction between those three different components, which will create an overall reduction in how much traffic this specific... As it relates to identifying how much traffic this cancer pavilion will generate, we've conducted estimates based on essentially two methods. The first is, this cancer pavilion will have an inpatient component, so there will be beds. And we used published trip rates by the Institute of Transportation Engineers and their publication Trip Generation Manual, which is in its 10th edition, to estimate how much traffic would be associated with that inpatient component. Using round numbers for the proposed 96 beds during that A M. Peak hour, 150 trips would come in, 60 would leave, for a total two-way of 210 trips. Again, these are round numbers. They differ a little bit from the specific numbers in this study. The 96 beds in the evening peak hour would generate 50 trips coming in, 130 trips leaving, for a total two-way of 180 trips. Again, during that evening peak hour. To identify and estimate the amount of traffic for what I'll call the outpatient component of this cancer pavilion, we looked at research counts that we've done at the Memorial Sloan-Kettering Facility in Basking Ridge. Essentially, they're providing the same type of outpatient services, um, that is proposed, uh, before the board this evening with this cancer pavilion. Based on those research counts, we would estimate that the cancer pavilion outpatient component, again, in round numbers, would generate 185 trips coming in, 15 leaving, for a total two-way of 200 trips during that morning peak hour. 20 coming in, 135 exiting, for a total two-way of 155 during the weekday evening peak hour. Now, we've conservatively not accounted for in our analysis the fact that there are some, um, existing buildings and a parking lot that would be removed as part of this project if the board was inclined to grant approval. So we did not take any credit for the existing traffic that's being generated currently because of those uses that will be removed. We've assumed that all of the estimated trips would be by vehicle, by passenger cars. We've assumed no mass transit usage, even though the city is well-served by transit, not only in terms of rail, but also busing. And we've assumed that this cancer pavilion, for purposes of estimating trip generation, is a completely standalone facility. We've assumed no interaction with the existing, uh, Cancer Institute building, nor any interaction with Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, even though we know that there will be interaction between those three different components, which will create an overall reduction in how much traffic this specific proposed cancer pavilion would generate. So in terms of the amount of traffic we've identified and its associated impacts, I would respectfully submit to the board that it is conservative in nature and that we are overestimating how much traffic will be generated. And the impacts that we've identified, uh, certainly would be also an overestimation. The benefit of this site location, and in particular, the hub city in and of itself, is that you have many ways to get into and out of the city. This specific site benefits from the fact that it is nearby to Eastern Avenue, Hamilton Street, and Somerset, Somerset Street. All of those streets are what I would, um, characterize as primary pathways, both into and out of the city in and of itself, but also to the specific area where the proposed project, uh, is located. Because of that reason, you will see a distribution of the cancer pavilion traffic along many of those pathways and in many different directions. That will serve to minimize the amount of impact the cancer pavilion has on any specific intersection or specific street corridor. Based on existing travel patterns that we've identified from the traffic counts, we would anticipate, again, on round numbers, approximately 12% of the site traffic would be to and from the west along Hamilton Street. 10% would be to and from the north along Eastern Avenue. 20% would be along Hamilton Street to and from the east. 22% would be along Somerset Street to and from the west. 5% would be to and from the east along Somerset Street, and 31% would be to and from the south along Eastern Avenue. Uh, if you apply those distribution percentages to the trip generation estimates that I, uh, just previously testified to, what comes out in terms of the amount of site traffic along these different roadways and at specific intersections is the fact that, again, these estimates are conservative, that along most approaches to the eight intersections that we did traffic counts at and that we identified traffic impacts for, you will see less than one new vehicle per minute during peak hours. So again, let me repeat that. Less than one new vehicle per minute along most of the approaches at the eight study intersections that we evaluated would be the traffic impact associated with the proposed cancer pavilion. I would submit to you, and the detailed analysis in the report bears out, that that level of traffic increase is not going to translate into a significant change in traffic operations at almost every single movement at all the intersections, uh, that we analyzed. So I would characterize the cancer pavilion's traffic impact as not significantly impacting existing traffic operations. If you were inclined to stand along Hamilton Street or Somerset, Somerset Street, or Eastern Avenue, and you would observe traffic operations today, and if the board was inclined to grant approval in the future and the cancer pavilion is constructed, I would respectfully submit to you that along those road corridors, you would not be able to notice a discernible difference in traffic operations because of the traffic that the cancer pavilion would generate. And again, those conclusions, in my opinion, and respectfully, are conservative because I do believe that we've overestimated the amount of traffic that will be generated by the cancer pavilion for the reasons that I've stated as part of my direct testimony. In terms of the driveways that will accommodate the cancer pavilion traffic, both along Hardenberg Street as well as Division Street, our analysis is clear that those driveways will operate efficiently and safely. And with that, I'd be happy to answer, uh, any questions that the board has, or if Mr. Liebling would like to answer or ask me, uh, any follow-up questions.
Uh, I don't have any follow-up questions, um, Madam Chair. Um, as Mr. Disario stated, he's available for questions.
Madam Chair. Ma- uh, Madam Chair, uh, this is, uh, Charlie Carley. Uh, just a couple of quick questions for, uh, Mr. Disario. Um, Dan, when you did your, uh, uh, your percentages for trip distribution coming, uh, to the site, you know, all the math makes, makes sense, but how did you, uh, uh, determine what percentage of vehicles would, uh, use which driveway?
We had signed most of the entering vehicles using the driveway coming in off of Division Street because that driveway is oriented to the, uh, main pickup drop-off area of the cancer pavilion, such that most people coming in, if they wanted to access the parking garage, it would be easy to do so off of Division Street. If they wanted to drop somebody off at the major drop-off area, they could do that and then drive directly into the parking garage. Uh, the balance of the entering traffic is assigned to the driveway, which would be an in-only driveway directly into the parking garage off of Hardenberg Street.
Okay. Now, the, I'm looking at your Table Three Intersection Capacity Analysis Summary. And, uh, out of, uh, oh, jeez, the dozens and dozens of, of turns, you analyze all the turns at the respective intersections, uh, that surround the site. There's some isolated degradations in level of service, uh, from the, uh, 2024 no, no build P M. Scenario to the 2024, uh, build P M. Scenario. Um, to my eyes, uh, you, you know, you're adding delays on the order of three seconds to those intersections. How would you characterize the, uh, the overall impact in terms of those isolated incidents where you do have a degradation of service?
I would characterize them as not significant. Um, and again, if you were one of the motoring public that would be traversing those specific intersections and you were to incur an additional three seconds of delay, I do not think you would be able to make a discernible difference between what you would incur in terms of delay today versus what you would incur in the future if the pavilion were built.
All right. Are there any instances in the existing road network where, when you took a look at it, that you could recommend any sort of tweak or improvements uh, that might not, uh, arise from the construction of the, uh, Cancer Institute, but, uh, to your eye, you know, might be recommended to the city in any case?
Uh, we did not. And I would point out that, uh, a lot of the intersections that we did analyze are stop-controlled intersections. So they're unsignalized. And by virtue of the urban nature of the street grid within the section of the city, um, there's really nothing that you can do to improve operations at those stop-controlled intersections short of installing traffic signals. And none of those unsignalized intersections, uh, would close to meeting warrants for any signals.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Madam Chair, are you entertaining comments from the board at this time?
I don't know if we've lost Mr. Curry a little bit, but, uh, Bob, I would certainly support, uh, the board asking questions of the experts.
Uh, uh, this is Bob Cardika. Uh, is this your traffic analysis based on the presumption that there will be a parking deck um, uh, adjacent to, uh, the cancer pavilion, uh, which, as you know, is not part of this application? Or is that not relevant to your traffic analysis?
It is not relevant to the traffic analysis. Um, we've identified the traffic that would be generated by the cancer pavilion itself. So all the traffic associated with the cancer pavilion, we've identified and assigned to the surrounding network.
Okay. So if there were no parking deck, if that, if that wasn't to come, come to be, that would make no difference in your traffic analysis?
In terms of the amount of traffic that the cancer pavilion would generate, absolutely no difference. Where that, where that traffic may, um, go to in terms of available parking supply, that would make a difference.
So if, uh, if, for example, that deck, um, uh, doesn't materialize and, uh, the, um, uh, the person's, uh, working at the cancer pavilion had to park in other locations, that would kind of render your analysis, uh, not relevant, correct? It, it might, might be very different.
It would be different, but I would submit to you, if there were other locations where, um, cancer pavilion patients, visitors, staff would park, the likelihood that the traffic impacts associated with the cancer pavilion would be lower than what we've identified in our study is quite possible because we've focused all the traffic for the cancer pavilion to the Hardenberg Street and Division Street corners. If you start to have multiple parking lots, let's say, as does much of Robert Wood Johnson in terms of multiple parking lots supporting the overall medical campus, you're going to distribute the cancer pavilion traffic to a greater extent than we've accounted for in our study, and those associated impacts would be less than what we've identified.
Okay. And just one other thing, you, you had, I, I don't recall specifically the various directions that the traffic is going to go and the percentages associated with that, but it, you know, I would kind of make the assumption that the vast majority of, uh, uh, persons working at this facility would be heading, uh, on Albany Street and possibly other streets towards Route 18 and the Turnpike and the other major thoroughfares. Is that not a valid assumption?
Yes, and our study reflects about, call it 35% doing exactly that. Um, just to give you some overall directions, the study assumes about 35% to and from the west, so towards North Brunswick and Franklin Park, if you will, uh, with the balance being split to the north, heading up to the 287 corridor and down to the 18 corridor. So you're right, it's about one-third to the west and two-thirds, um, in the other directions, most of which would end up to the 287 corridor or the Route 18 corridor, as you stated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any other board members have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Dan, this is Dale.
Go ahead, Dale.
Yes, Dale, go ahead.
I just had, uh, a question. I was just wondering, why was, um, excuse me, uh, Somerset, Lewis Street, Sedham Street, um, intersection, uh, not included in this, in this?
Um, we identified all the intersections that surround the site, um, between Hardenberg and Division. So we thought and feel that in terms of identifying traffic impacts, the study that we've embarked on and, and prepared and submitted for your consideration is extensive and tells the traffic impact story quite adequately for the cancer pavilion, uh, that's before you.
Do you have any other questions, Dale?
No, that, that's it. I'm just wondering about that.
Okay, thank you. Do any other board members have any questions for the traffic engineer?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, John Petrolino here.
Yes, John, go ahead.
Thank you. Excuse me. Uh, thank you for your testimony, Mr. Disario. Appreciate it. Um, I, I, I do have some questions with regard to kind of the specifics and some of the underlying, uh, assumptions that are, that are used to build onto your, uh, analysis. So what is the, uh, on the data measurement, what was the current, uh, or then-current ingress egress, uh, rates at the existing RWJ facility that's, uh, adjacent to the proposed site?
Are you talking about the existing surface parking lot?
Uh, utilization at the hospital. Um, you know, I, I, I know that you stated that part of your assumption is that there would be a reduction of traffic if, uh, you, uh, assessed both the cancer pavilion and the hospital separately, but obviously, um, you know, in my mind, the way I look at it, it's, uh, analyzing the current traffic utilization with a, a, a school there versus, uh, utilization with, uh, an 11-story cancer pavilion. So in my mind, I, I, I think we're gonna see an increase, but what I'm trying to understand is what is the current utilization rates, uh, by the hospital when you observed that? I, I assume that that was part of your assessment, given its proximity to the proposed location.
We identified all the traffic traversing the eight intersections that comprise the study area for this report, which is inclusive of hospital traffic as well as other city traffic. So I don't have a specific answer in terms of how much that is attributed to the hospital, per se, um, but the hospital volumes are reflected in the existing volumes. And, and you raise a good point. There is an active school that would be replaced, and the traffic associated with that school, we have not taken credit for that either in terms of, um, the existing volumes attributed to the school.
Sure, sure. No, I, I appreciate that, but, uh, I, I live in this area and I can tell you that, uh, most, most of the traffic there is foot traffic, but, um, but your point's noted, and I appreciate that. Um, so, so I see that, uh, in some of your supporting documentation, the traffic timing and operating charts have a date stamp of May 1, 2003. Uh, is, is, is that still the timing and, uh, uh, operating patterns that are in effect there?
That were provided by the city, yes, in terms of the signal timings and/or the county. That is correct.
So, uh, did you determine whether or not those charts are accurate? Or is it just assumed that they are in your observations, kind of take into account what is going to be on the charts versus, um, what I'll call obs- direct observational data at, at those intersections?
You raise an interesting question, and it's one that I've been confronted with on past projects. The official traffic signal timing directive for signalized intersection is what has to be used for analysis. Whether that reflects existing operations or not is something that you could debate, but legally, that official document represents the way that signal should be operated. I can tell you that our, and let me back up, our traffic volumes, when we say they were counted, they were counted, but technology as it is these days, they were counted by video means. So all the intersections and all the volumes identified from the intersection or the traffic counts were done by video. So we always look at the videos to see how traffic is flowing, to see if the existing analysis in terms of the numbers and crunching the numbers reflect what are being observed from the videos that represented operations during the counts. And I can tell you that the observations from the videos marry up well with the existing analysis in terms of how traffic operations occurred during those counts.
Um, okay, I, so, but in general, in general terms, would you agree that traffic pattern and timing can have an impact on, uh, volumes and throughput of traffic in areas where, uh, traffic signals are located?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and, and I'll get, uh, well, actually, I'll ask the question now. So at, at Eastern and Somerset, the 2024 no-build A M. shows a intersection, uh, capacity utilization rate of 92.9%. Can, can you talk a little bit about what the ICUs represent?
That is essentially a percentage of the intersection's capacity based on the volumes that are traversing that intersection. So you have an intersection capacity, and then you have a demand, which is the volumes themselves.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I think that that's kind of what I thought of that, but I, I appreciate the confirmation. So, so when that says that it has an associate level of service denoted as an F, what does that mean to you?
That is a failing operation.
So that's with the 2024 no-build A M., it's failing operations?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then obviously, the 2024 P M. Build has a, a G-level of service, which obviously, if going ordinarily is, is worse. And I think that that's, uh, backed up by the fact that the ICU is there. And I think that that's backed up by the fact that the ICUs there are 104.5%. Then when you factor in the AM Build, the ICU is actually almost 125%. So to me, that seems like a significant outstripping of available capacity if no other changes are made. Is that reflective of your understanding?
Yes.
Thank you. And there are a few other areas where there's, you know, similar capacity constraints and I think overstressing. What, but we don't need to get into that. So what does queue shown is max after two cycles reflect? What does that represent?
That is the calculated queues for individual movements.
So so you're saying that that an individual vehicle would go through, you stop counting?
No, so the queues are calculated to identify how many cars would be waiting, if you will, in line for that particular movement.
Okay, I guess the disconnect in my mind is where we talk about the two cycles, which it's max after two cycles. So I don't know if that means that the capacity at that intersection is maxed out or just the count.
Well, the traffic counts are based on 15-minute intervals. So they account for every car that goes through the intersection and every car that makes a particular movement at an intersection. We analyze, as a matter of practice, the highest 15-minute interval within the peak hour. So we are analyzing the peak of the peak, if you will, in terms of the peak 15-minute volume. Once you get past that peak 15-minute volume or even leading up to that peak 15-minute volume, operations are better than what we've depicted in the study.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Can you clarify for me what a dilemma vehicle is?
Dilemma vehicle usually is accounted with a left turn movement. So they will make a left turn, say, while the traffic light is turning from green to red.
Oh, okay, interesting. And so the assumption of zero dilemma vehicles is essentially everybody is acting as a very good driver, let's say.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I know in Brunswick, we got lots of very good drivers.
And it's again, it's conservative because the reality is you'll get what's called sneakers, and people will sneak a particular movement, say, on the yellow or even on the red at times. So you can process more vehicles than the analysis would otherwise suggest.
I believe it. I would be guilty of that on occasion myself.
I think everyone on the board, as well as the public, probably can admit to that as well.
Yes, I'm sure.
Including myself, I'm not exempt from that. Admission, exactly.
I appreciate that. So just winding it up here. So are there any additional traffic control measures that are being proposed? Or any that, and I know that a gentleman, the P E, prior asked the question, a similar question, but if you could just clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it.
There are none, but that doesn't mean that if the city sees something by way of timing changes that might benefit everyone, we could certainly look into that. But our study, as submitted, we have not identified any changes that are necessary to accommodate the pavilion traffic.
That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. DiSario. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other board members that have questions for the traffic engineer? Hearing none. Dan, do you want to go into the public portion?
Sorry. So let me just my language thing up. At this time, we are preparing to open the meeting to cross-examination of this expert for five minutes per person in order to assure that the planning board can hear from the interested public and the public can hear public comments. I will organize the speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will, well, I can't unmute the public call-in, so everyone will need to unmute themselves if they wish to speak. If you are on a computer or other digital device, you can just click on the microphone. If you are on a phone, you'll use again star six, as I instructed earlier. At that time, I will ask those with the last name starting with A to provide me your last name, first name, and home address. I will confirm that the information is correct. I will move on to the next person alphabetically from C. Upon the completion of asking for all last names from A to Z, I will ask one more time for anyone who would like to be placed on the list of speakers. We will then move through the list of speakers by calling the person by name and permitting them five minutes to speak. Once we complete the list, we will once again check to see if anyone else would like to comment or would like to cross-examine. After asking three times, we will then close the cross-examination portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted and speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all. I'll ask that you please remain silent while other people are responding so that we can all hear each other and begin speaker registration process. I'll ask any member of the public on the phones or on digital devices who would like to comment, oh, sorry, who would like to cross-examine this specific witness with a last name starting with the letter A, please state your full name and home address. A. B.
Lindsay Bushong, 50 Robinson Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey.
Lindsay. Bushong.
That's correct.
You said 50 Robinson?
That's correct.
All right, wonderful. Thank you very much. And once again, again, if you're on the phone, star six to unmute yourselves. All right, C.
Ed Chapman, 13 Hardenberg Street in New Brunswick.
Chapman. 13. Okay, thank you. D.
Ashad Data, 50 Robinson Street.
Okay, 50 Robinson. All right, E. F. G.
Still one. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
One from V. Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting.
Oh. So what's your name?
Nika Deitch, D E I T C H, address 68 Townsend.
C H. And I apologize, your address again?
68 Townsend Street, New Brunswick.
Thank you. All right, I believe we were on G. But again, you know, if the letter that we missed. Juan Gonzalez?
Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
Gonzalez, 11 Cotter Drive, New Brunswick.
Got you, Mr. Cotter. Who's speaking up?
Yeah, Dan Gil Martin.
Oh.
50 Robinson Street, apartment two.
You said 50 Robinson, I saw.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, let's see, so that's GH.
Uh, yes, David Hughes. I'm at 330 South Third Avenue in Highland Park.
South Third, okay.
I work in New Brunswick.
Okay. So David Hughes, right?
Correct.
Okay. I. J.
Yeah, Ming Jia.
Ming Jia.
68 Townsend Street, New Brunswick. Can I ask why we're being asked to give our address? We weren't asked to do that last time.
It was actually on the thing for, it's typical for us to do, and it must have just slipped through the cracks. So I do apologize for not doing it last time. So.
Okay, thank you.
HIJK.
Charlie Cradville.
Charlie Cradville and Jessica Cradville.
Brian Koulas.
Hey, Koulas. So let me just walk that back to Charlie, Jessica, and Koulas. Addresses, please.
Of Sedam Street, New Brunswick.
Okay. I apologize, I couldn't I couldn't hear. There was a bit of.
Piscataway, New Jersey.
All right. Mr. Koulas?
East Brunswick, New Jersey.
Okay. All right, so that gets this K, HIJK, L. M.
Kate McGaffney.
N.
McGaffney, yeah.
All right, okay, sorry, M. Who from M?
Kate McGaffney.
Kate McGaffney. Address?
Hardenberg Street.
Okay, Hardenberg Street.
Danielle Moore.
Danielle Moore. Address, Ms. Moore?
Birchwood Terrace Apartments on Hamilton Street.
Good terrace. Thank you. Anyone else for M?
Yes. Matthew, M A T T H E W. Meoni, M E O N I. And I'm from Matushen.
Thank you, Mr. Meoni. See, M. N. O. P. Q. R.
Arly Rubens, Lewis Street, New Brunswick.
First name?
Arly, A R L Y.
Thank you, Rubens.
Al Romero.
First name, Mr. Romero?
Miguel, M I G U E L.
Okay. So, uh. URS?
Linda Stork, S T O R K. Park Boulevard.
S, T. U. V. W. X. Y. Z. Is there anyone that I did not get? Who was listed speakers?
Hi, yes, my name is Daniel Cruz. I didn't hear you say C before. I'm from Union, New Jersey.
Okay. Anyone else besides Mr. Cruz?
My name is John Borje.
Address, Borje?
Lewis Street, New Brunswick.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Ruth Tucker.
Ruth Tucker?
R U T H.
Okay.
T U C K E R.
Okay, address?
Freeman Street, New Brunswick.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none. We will now enter the cross-examination portion. And let me just double check here. The first the first person we have up is Borje from Lewis Street. Your five minutes begin now. Oh, hey, sorry, I have to swear you in, I believe, or Arvin, question. Are these people just from last meeting?
Yeah, no swearing in for cross-examination.
Okay, cool. All right, so even better. Borje, your five minutes are on.
So did the traffic report take into consideration the pandemic and how that affected levels of traffic in the areas observed?
No, because our traffic counts were done in 2019, in April 30th specifically. That's okay.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Not a problem.
Uh, sorry, hold on. I have some points that I wrote down.
Take your time.
Were any of the areas observed particularly prone to accidents?
I don't know.
And would this have an impact on rates of accidents?
I don't know what the accident experience is at any of the study intersections.
Okay. And you said that even though your estimations are very conservative, you ultimately do not believe that they will lead to any significant increase in traffic in the areas observed in the surrounding neighborhood?
I testified that in terms of changes to traffic operations, there will not be significant changes at any of the study intersections.
But rates of traffic should not, should also not be significantly impacted, right?
The cancer pavilion will generate traffic as we've identified and estimated in our study and as I've testified to.
Right. Did the study also include vehicles of all sizes?
I can't tell by the phone.
Yes, all vehicles that were counted at the eight study intersections were classified as either cars or trucks.
Okay. Were all of the intersections observed at the same time or were they separate studies?
They were observed all at the same time.
Okay. And as you said before, the studies were converted as assuming all incoming patients to the pavilion will be arriving through vehicles and not public transportation?
Correct.
Was that done just for the purposes of the study?
Could you repeat that, please?
Was that assumption just made for the purposes of the study? Because people coming in through public transit wouldn't really be relevant to the purposes of the study?
It was assumed no mass transit usage to be conservative, such that that would lead to estimating more traffic than what would otherwise occur if we were to account for people taking mass transit. So in other words, no mass transit credit was taken, and I would submit to you respectfully that the amount of traffic we've identified during peak hours is likely higher than what will actually occur.
All right. Thank you very much for sharing your expertise. I have no further questions.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Bushong.
Hi. Yep, I'm here.
Hi.
Yeah, sorry, I'm under Nishad's thing because we're in the same room.
That's okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry, my questions are kind of out of order because I've just been sort of writing them down.
Not a not a problem at all. Take your time.
So this is a clarification question. So this was, all of this planning was under the assumption that the Cancer Center would generate new jobs and these people would commute in from outside of New Brunswick? Or sort of a mixture of both?
For purposes of the study, we've assumed it's all new traffic to the city. So it's all traffic emanating outside the city. But you raise a good point. There could be people that live in the immediate neighborhood that walk to work and wouldn't generate a vehicle, but we have an accounting for that.
Okay, interesting, okay. So before today's call, I was just like doing a little bit of research on like traffic patterns and just like general studies on traffic in metropolitan areas. And an idea kept coming up of like triple convergence, like that like no matter how much you try to account for traffic, it's still going to end up being congested, which is sort of silly to give that even a name. But did you guys think at all about how? um, did you guys think at all about how to minimize traffic? Um, just sort of outside of the box, or you like kind of just like went like right at it? Sorry, I'm not being very eloquent here with my question, but you just sort of like, you didn't think of any other ways to like mitigate traffic or impact how many cars are going to be coming into the area?
We conservatively assumed an estimated traffic essentially for a cancer pavilion that exists somewhere, let's say in a suburban area, with zero mass transit availability and zero people living close enough to it to walk. And we did that specifically and intentionally because we wanted to put forth a conservative traffic analysis and identify traffic impacts and traffic generation that would be more than what will actually occur. So it was intentional, and you, you raise a good point. The reality is, if you look at this specific site, and look, I live in South Brunswick. I heard one of the residents say she lives in Birchwood Apartments, which is down Hamilton Street. My wife lived there when she was a Rutgers student. One of my son's best friends now lives in Birchwood Apartments. So I've been in this area for quite a long time. And the reality is that, can you assume reasonably that some staff, some doctors, some patients will live within walking distance of the site and not drive a car? Absolutely. Can you assume those same types of people, some of which will take the train to get to and from here? Absolutely. So I think inherently because of the urban nature of New Brunswick, you are going to see less of a reliance on a personal vehicle to get to and from this pavilion than what we've estimated.
Right. And, um, did you guys think about like the idea of different shift times? I know like nurses and things like that were like a wild variety of shifts and like how that might be like drive up traffic at times that where there's not normally a lot of traffic?
We, we did not, no.
Okay. Um. And, okay, so we talked about how the public transit was not included. Um, and sorry, this is another clarification question. So this is based on like employee, patient, visitor, all, all kinds of people going in and out of the, the cancer pavilion, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, we talked about the parking garage, okay, um. And this is sort of, Jean-Luc kind of alluded to this, but, um, so if you're calculating an increase in traffic, are you also able to calculate like an increase in accidents or specifically like pedestrian accidents? I know someone else mentioned that there's a ton of foot traffic, um, and how that would be impacted at all?
We did not do an accident, um, evaluation.
And another thing is like, if the cancer pavilion goes in, that, that means the school wouldn't be there, so then there would be more probably buses in the area. It would need to be bussed out to the Jersey Ave location. Did you account for the fact that like there were changes in traffic patterns without a school there?
No, we did not account for the existing traffic associated with the school or changes attributed to, um, the school being relocated. No.
Okay. All right, cool. I think that is all of my questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next, uh, cross examiner is, uh, Ed Chapman. Are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Uh, my wife and I own a house right across from where the proposed cancer center is going to be. Um, we've lived in the neighborhood for 30 years. My first question, um, is, I'd like you to verify that people will be able to enter the parking garage directly from the drop-off lane without going onto Hardenberg Street and making two left turns across traffic.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, there's also quite a bit of non-vehicular, non-vehicular traffic on Hardenberg. Um, it's a city designated bicycle route. It's also a primary route for the electric scooters. Rutgers has been supplying its students along with a tremendous amount of foot traffic. Was that taken into account at all?
It doesn't go into a vehicular, um, study as we put forth, but I don't disagree with you that there's other um, activity along Hardenberg. I haven't seen the scooters personally, um, but I take your word that they do occur, and it seems like the scooters are inherent now to urban environments, and I can tell you, I've been out to Seattle. I do a lot of traveling in my business, and where New Jersey is probably Johnny-come-lately in terms of the scooter, uh, option for travel for people.
Yeah, it's, it is a, a big street for scooter traffic, Hardenberg. Um, also, there's no information in the traffic study about the impact on residential permit street parking. Um, that's also not part of a traffic study?
It is not part of our traffic study, um, but I can tell you and, and having, and quite frequently, um, we'll go to Stuff Your Face and Thomas Sweets. I am abundantly aware of the resident parking, um, that exists in this immediate area, so I don't believe the pavilion will have any specific impact, one way or the other, on the resident permit parking, unless one of the people that work at the pavilion is actually a resident in the neighborhood and has a resident permit parking.
Well, it looks like, um, the entire project will lose about a dozen residential permit street parking spaces. Um, not even counting the 10 or so alongside the school, which are available and the school's not in session. So I'd just like the board to consider that. Um, because the parking deck is not going to mitigate that unless you allow residents of Division in Hardenberg to have free parking in the new deck, which would at least be a nice bone to toss to the residents considering all we're going to have to put up with. Also, alternate side of the street parking rules will need to be eliminated as parking spaces are eliminated on half of the street on Division in Hardenberg. But, uh, okay, that is, uh, all I would like to say now, and this will come up again as the board reviews the plans for the parking deck. But thank you, Mr. Disario.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. The, uh, I'm just making sure I'm, I'm not muted. All right, the next speaker is Daniel Cruz. Are you there?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
All right, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Mr. Disario.
Hi.
I'm doing well. How are you doing?
I'm doing a little hot, so you're gonna see me taking water every now and then, but I'm doing well. Thank you.
No, very good to hear that. Um, so I, I was wondering, um, would there be any, uh, um, lights added to these intersections or any type of things to mitigate, uh, traffic in these areas at all? Well, was that something that, uh, I haven't actually looked into the plans exactly. I was just wondering, um.
No, no, sir.
That would be something that, uh.
No, no, sir. No, no additional traffic signals are proposed as part of this project.
Okay, um, in, um, so how, how many, how many, uh, parking spaces would be added in the parking garage that's been proposed, uh, approximately? How many, like, how many floors? Sorry, um, or?
Uh, this is Charles Leblanc. Um, the, the parking garage is a separate application. Uh, this, this project generates a, a, a specific traffic, a specific parking requirement, which we testified, you know, will be met in the garage.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I guess I came, I came a little bit late.
Um, not a problem.
I just wanted to know, uh, how, how, how big the, um, the, but I guess, yes, uh, is, well, I have another time, another chance to ask these questions at another time, or is that, um, maybe, uh?
The, this, this garage generates 624 spaces, required 624 spaces. When, when there's an application before this board for, for, um, the parking garage, um, all that will be dealt with in, in detail.
Okay, well then, uh, forgive me, all my questions have been answered then.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right.
Okay, uh, next on is, uh, if I recall correctly, Deech, if I'm pronouncing it correctly. Are you there?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You're on.
All right, thank you so much.
Hi.
Hi, uh, thank you for your wonderful expert, uh, statements. Um, I was wondering, um, what have you done in the last 12 months to improve your knowledge on traffic control? Just as, because they skipped over, um, your, I know the court under, I know the, uh, officials know what your expertise is, but they kind of skipped over that for us.
Oh, it, I can certainly give you my qualifications. So I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Temple University. I have a Master of Science in Transportation Engineering from, uh, New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey with a particular focus in the practice of traffic engineering since 96. And I've prepared well over a thousand traffic studies for almost every conceivable land use that you could think of. I also hold, uh, a separate certification that's separate and apart from state professional engineering licenses, and that's a national certification, and that's the Professional Traffic Operations Engineer. So a PTOE, if you ever see those initials after someone's name, and that is a certification that is, um, provided through examination. So not only did I take the New Jersey Professional Engineering Examination and successfully pass it, thankfully, uh, but I also took another exam to get the PTOE certification, and that PTOE certification is, uh, recognized nationally. So it's, it applies to all 50 states.
Okay, thank you so much. That's you a very impressive, um, resume. Um, I was wondering how, uh, exactly your, um, firm business, uh, was, got involved with this process? Um. Were, how were the contracts originally made?
Um, Mr., Mr. Ital, I, I, and, um, Madam, I reject that line of questioning. It's just nothing relevant.
Thank you, Madam, this is Arvin Ital. That would be, uh, not relevant to the testimony that you provided earlier and, and certainly beyond the scope of the testimony that you provided as a traffic expert.
Okay, if you have any other additional questions?
Yes, I do. Um, you mentioned, uh, using other, uh, uh, sorry, I can do some feedback. Um, you mentioned facing some of your, uh, estimations off of other, uh, cancer pavilion, similar outpatient-type, uh, buildings. Um, I was wondering if, um, those areas also experienced similar, uh, incredible slowdowns of traffic generally, because I know you mentioned that, that some of the traffic would be fed to 18, um, and I know if you're in the area, you'll be aware that especially during Rutgers season, 18 turns to bumper-to-bumper, no-movement traffic from like 4:00 to 5:00 PM at least every day. Um, I was wondering if this was at all factor into that?
So just so the record's clear, we looked at the Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Facility in Basking Ridge, and that's a location that doesn't have any mass transit. Nobody lives next to it that would walk to it. So it's truly a suburban location, and using that information, we estimated what the, uh, outpatient component of the proposed cancer pavilion would generate. So I think it represents an overestimation of how much traffic would be generated during peak hours. Um, but I completely understand what you're saying about Route 18. And unfortunately, when you're leaving the city, that backup, leaving the city, heading towards the turnpike is largely created by that last traffic signal before you get to Route 1. Um, and I know when DOT was redoing 18 quite a few years ago, there was a battle to remove that signal, and the DOT lost that battle. So all of us collectively have to endure that traffic created by that last traffic signal, um, because of that.
Okay, um, one other question I had is, I know these, uh, obviously the, uh, counting of all the traffic and stuff happened in 2019 before the pandemic and stuff, and hopefully once uh, ground breaks, it won't be as much of an issue, um, but, uh, do you see, see any, foresee any potential issues or complications in that, uh, large portion of George Street is currently shut down for, uh, public seating for outdoor dining per COVID regulations?
I don't see an issue with that, and look, hopefully, we all get back to some level of normacy in our lives after this pandemic is over. But I will submit to you again respectfully to everyone. I think this COVID crisis pandemic, however you want to label it, has and is gonna change in wholesale terms the mindset of how people live and work and commute. And I truly believe that the traffic volumes, not only in New Brunswick, but across the state and frankly, across the nation, are gonna change, and they're gonna change by being less than what they were pre-COVID. Because I think a lot of companies, including my own, have a newfound perspective that people working from home, and if you're lucky to have a job that allows you to work from home, they have found that productivity, efficiency hasn't changed, and actually, it's gone up because people aren't sitting in their cars for an hour, two hours each way doing these long commutes. So they've essentially captured two, sometimes four hours each day, some of which they can dedicate to doing additional work, and some of which they can dedicate to their own personal lives. So I think the amount of telecommuting that we're gonna see post-COVID is gonna reduce traffic volumes, uh, in a big way compared to what they were pre-COVID.
That sounds very interesting. I hadn't looked at before. Um, thank you very much. I don't have any other further questions.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, next up is Dada. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
You're on.
How, how we doing, Mr. Disario?
Doing well. How about yourself, sir?
I'm doing okay. I'm doing okay. Um, so one of my questions, one of the first questions that I had that came to mind, um, and you mentioned earlier, you didn't take a look at the Lewis, Soidem, and French Street intersection. Is there any reason for that? Because as far as I'm aware, you, in order to get from the Somerset Street area to Route 1, if you're coming from like the Princeton area or the South Brunswick area, um, you have to go by that intersection.
We extended the, um, study area to encompass all of the intersections that surround the site and the East Avenue, or East, excuse me, Eastern Avenue corridor, uh, as well to the east. So those eight intersections pretty much give you a representation, an accurate representation of what the traffic impacts would be for, um, this particular cancer pavilion and this site. You could chase traffic for miles and miles and miles and study every intersection in that kind of ring emanating from the site. But the greatest traffic impacts are gonna be those intersections that are closest to the site. So, um, I think we've put forth a comprehensive traffic impact study that can give any, uh, reasonably-minded reader of that study a good idea of what the impacts would be. And again, it's conservative because I truly believe we've overestimated how much traffic the cancer pavilion is gonna generate for the previous reasons that I stated.
Um, yeah, you mentioned that, uh, you used, uh, suburban numbers, uh, uh, from the Memorial Sloan-Kettering, uh, uh, the project in Basking Ridge, but don't you think that there are some unique conditions, uh, that you'd be overlooking by doing so in an urban area?
Yes, I think because you have mass transit availability, because there's a likelihood that some staff and visitors and doctors will live in the city and walk to the cancer pavilion. I think we've overestimated how much traffic the outpatient portion of the cancer pavilion would actually generate.
Are you aware of the fact that this project is displacing 750 school kids?
I am aware that there's a school that comprises some of the property that the cancer pavilion is proposed on, yes.
How much time do I have left?
You're at 3:15.
Okay. Apart from the Memorial Sloan-Kettering project in Basking Ridge, do you draw any inspiration from any other similar projects?
We did not, no.
You said that you accounted for both cars and trucks. Where do buses fall under?
They would be considered trucks for purposes of capacity analysis, and we have accounted for them in the traffic volumes that were collected.
Did your traffics, did your particular traffic study account for any of the foot traffic, or was it mainly just automobiles?
Automobiles.
Okay, I think that about answers all the questions that I have for now. Thanks very much.
Let me just clarify one thing. I'm looking at the traffic counts now. We did do pedestrian counts as well. So we did account for pedestrian volumes too.
Could you share some of those figures with us real quick?
Pedestrian volumes as it relates to the existing pedestrians at particular intersections, not pedestrian volumes that the pavilion may generate.
I see. Okay, I think that about does it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Juan Gonzalez. Your five minutes start now.
Well, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, well, Mr. Desario, I have several questions for you. Related, a lot of them to the, clearly to the traffic, well, most, all of them to the, your traffic analysis.
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear on this, I'm trying to get your, here, hold on one second. Your numbers say that you're expecting about 400, 407 trips at the peak hours. About 207 of them as a result of the 96-bed hospital and about 200 of them as a result of the cancer center. That's correct?
Yes, for the morning peak hour.
For the morning, right. For the morning period, right, for the morning peak hour period.
Yes, sir.
And you also mentioned that you've used for the hospital portion of your analysis, the trip generator, I think you said 10th edition. Now, I'm looking at that, that 10th edition. And, and they have two ways of measuring hospital trip generation. It's code 610. And it says if you're measuring by beds, it's 22.32 daily rate. And if you're measuring by, by thousands of square feet, it's 10.72. So you used this 22.32 daily rate for the, for the 96-bed hospital?
Yes, we use, no, we use the trip rates per bed.
Trip rates per bed. And, and so the daily rate that I'm seeing here, unless I'm reading this wrong, is 22.32 daily.
I don't have it in front, I, I don't know. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Now, this, this, this project really has three component parts. It has a component part, that's a 96-bed hospital. It's got the component part that is the clinics that will be taking care of outpatient clinics. And it also has a research and development part that will be doing clinical trials. So I can understand why you might have had a problem trying to figure out your, how you would, how you would gauge the clinics part. But now, I'm trying to figure out which did you use? Because in the institutional, the trip generator for their estimates for institutional use for clinics, they say that it's 38 daily trips per thousand square feet. And for research and development, it's 11 trips, 11.26 per thousand square feet. So there's obviously much more patient, much more traffic generated by people who are coming in as outpatient clinics than by researchers. But either one of them are much more than the trip generation by, in terms of beds. Now, I have problems with your numbers. I'll tell you why. And tell me where I'm wrong. You know, I'm, you know, I'm not an expert in this. You are. But I do read English and I do read numbers, okay? We've been told by RWJ and Mr. Palladino that there will be 20,000 new clinic visits per year capacity. I did the numbers.
Excuse me, one minute warning, Mr. Gonzalez.
Okay, that's about 76 trips per, per day. There's supposed to be 600 people working here. 600 people. So we've been told over and over again, 600 new jobs. There's gonna be trucks coming in here, and then there's going to be outpatients. My estimate is that there's gotta be at least 700, 800 people per day coming in and out of this place. But you're telling us that in the morning, in the mornings, there's only gonna be 200 coming in. No, I'm sorry, 184 coming in and, and six, I'm sorry, 333 coming in and 74 going out. So I don't understand how the, all these other people are gonna be getting in and out of this place based on the metrics that you've used to come up with your 407 peak hours. Can you tell me where I might be off on my numbers?
Time. I, I will, yeah, I will answer the question. Our numbers are based on a single hour. So in the single peak hour in the morning, there's 335 vehicles coming to the cancer pavilion in one hour. In the evening, it's another 70 coming in during one hour. So that's 400 vehicles coming in two hours out of 24 hours in a day. So using your numbers, you were throwing around things that I think add up to about 800, but don't quote me on that. So there will be other times of the day outside the normal commute hours that we've identified in the study where people will be coming to and leaving from the cancer pavilion. And that's how you get up to the daily numbers that I think you're trying to get to.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Next up is Gil Martin. Are you there?
Hello, how are you doing?
I will tell you, Mr. Martin, I've been, I've been looking at your video the whole time, and it's, it's like psychedelic here. Your, your, your background is like very psychedelic right now. Every time you move, it's distracting.
What can I say? I'm a psychedelic guy. I guess my question was, traffic gets crazy around there even when school is not in session. If there's going to be a cancer center there, do you have any plans for changes with street lights or find anything like that?
We do not, no.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's a concern for me a little bit. I guess another question that I have, I'm sorry if you spoke to this earlier, I might have missed it. What I'm really wondering is, what are some of the impacts that might happen on the Jersey Ave area and the 27 in terms of traffic? If there's going to be a school moved there where there wasn't anything going on before?
We didn't look that far west, but what I can tell you is about a third of the cancer pavilion traffic would go to and from the west, split between Hamilton Street and Somerset Street. So when, by the time you get to those areas that you're referring to, the cancer pavilion traffic, largely you're just gonna consist of through movements.
Okay, I'm not sure I'm understanding completely. Where would the two other thirds be going?
So to and from Hamilton Street to the west, so to and from the west, about 10%, or excuse me, 12% of the pavilion traffic would use Hamilton Street. And about 22% would use Somerset Street to go to and from the west. So if you want to get, get to Franklin Park, South Brunswick, North Brunswick, along the 27 corridor, you would use those two streets eventually. If you want to get to Somerset, you're probably just gonna stay on Hamilton Street, and it'll bring you right into the back end of Somerset. Same thing with Amwell and all those points west.
From one Dan to another, I think I understand you. What's my time? How much time do I have left?
3:08.
Okay. I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. Next up is Hughes. You there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. So I have a question, Mr. Desario, one basic question, and some follow-ups on what other people have said. It sounds like your methods just involve setting up a video camera, capturing tape for a few hours, and analyzing it later at eight intersections. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you didn't walk through or drive through or bicycle through any of these spaces. You actually have no experience in these areas. Is that right?
To the contrary, as I stated earlier, my wife's a Rutgers grad. She used to live in the Birchwood Apartments. My son's best friend lives in the Birchwood Apartments. And I frequent this area quite often because I do a lot of business with Robert Wood Johnson Hospital. And admittedly, I like stuff your face and I like Thomas Sweets. And particularly during the summer, I'm in this area all the time.
All right. So I'll tell you what I mean by experience. And these are questions where I'm just really asking for confirmation on what you've told other people. And I'm coming from this as a commute cyclist. I, I live in Highland Park, but I worked on the College Ave campus of Rutgers and on the Douglas campus. So I walk and bicycle through these, these, these places all the time.
So you must love what College Avenue is right now with the bike lanes?
The bike lanes are misdesigned. There's one that goes counterflow, and it's very unsafe. I guess you haven't used it. So tell me, how would you characterize the safety for bicyclists and pedestrians of the intersection between, at the intersection between Eastern and Somerset Avenue? How would you characterize safety?
I wouldn't characterize safety for bicycles. I haven't looked at it.
Okay, there's an intersection which I think your study doesn't consider an intersection, which is the driveway of, two driveways of Robert Wood Johnson on Somerset Avenue, where the driveways intersect with the sidewalks and they intersect with a bicycle path marked by sharrows. I gather you did no study of those two intersections. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you wouldn't be aware then of the way in which cars in those driveways double park, they back up, they park across the sidewalk, pedestrians trying to navigate there on Somerset have to walk out into the street. Many of those pedestrians are trying to get to the hospital. They may be elderly people, they may be people with disabilities. You haven't analyzed any of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is it fair to say that your study looked at traffic congestion but not at traffic safety?
Correct.
Okay, did you look at accident and citation reports, any information from the police on injuries, fatalities, near misses and so on at any of the eight intersections?
No, not required as part of a site plan application.
All right. Did you look at driver behavior, including distracted driving, speeding, cell phone usage, double parking, illegal usage of horns? Did you examine any of that?
None of what you identified goes into a traffic impact study.
Right. Did you look at bicycles? It sounds like you didn't look at scooters. You have no numbers on pedestrians and bicyclists. Is that correct?
Pedestrians, we have numbers for. Bicyclists, no.
Okay. So given that this study focused on congestion and not on safety, and, and this is an area with a lot of pedestrian traffic, including pedestrian traffic of people with disabilities and children, and people like myself, do you think that New Brunswick needs to do a safety study? A traffic safety study?
I have no opinion on that.
Do you think that your study focused on congestion adequately answers the question of the burden of risk that this facility will impose on New Brunswick?
As it relates to increase in traffic volumes and associated changes to operations, yes.
Well, how can you answer that question when you haven't studied bicyclists?
Because we studied vehicles and vehicles impact operations at intersections.
So you're a professional here, and you're speaking under oath, and you are trained in traffic safety from NJIT. And you're telling me you have no data on bicyclists. How can you maintain at the same time that your study adequately examines the safety impact of added vehicular traffic?
That question was asked by you, and I answered it.
How did, why don't you just repeat your?
Sir, use a minute warning, just letting you know.
I understand.
We identified and we were charged with identifying traffic impacts as they relate to the amount of traffic the cancer pavilion would generate.
Because I'm running out of time. You did what your firm was paid to do.
Excuse me.
I'm saying that your firm, you were not asked to do something very important.
Mr. Ital, I object. He followed the guidelines that are in the, in the New Brunswick's morning ordinance as to what constitutes a, a, a report.
And with all due, and with, and with all due respect, sir, when you ask a question, I get to answer it before you ask me another question or interject.
More time. I'll take more time then. Please answer the question.
You get no, you're not gonna get more time because you're being discourteous right now.
Mr. Desario, if I may, this is our board attorney. Madam Chair may inquire, how much time remains?
He's at 38 seconds.
Mr. Desario, if you want to answer that question, otherwise, Mr. Hughes, I would ask that you not interrupt.
We were charged with identifying how much traffic the cancer pavilion would generate and the associated traffic impacts consistent with the requirements for a site plan application for this project. And that's what we did.
Yeah, I'm not contesting that. I think you did exactly what the, what the board asked you to do. The board did not ask you to do a safety study. I would submit that the board should not move forward with this project until it has done a safety study, of the burden of risk on bicyclists and pedestrian and scooters, by the way, that a cancer pavilion will impose. And I say that as somebody who will be endangered by this project as a commute bicyclist in New Brunswick. And I believe my time is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next up is Ming Jai.
Right, so it's still Ming Jai. So I guess most of the comments that I wanted to make had already been addressed by the gentleman who just spoke. Mostly just the idea that we're really reiterating at this point pedestrians and bicyclists aren't at all acknowledged then. But if we're operating from the viewpoint that this was only going to be a study that, um, excuse me, let me just take a second to look through my questions.
Take, take your time. And just while you're composing your thoughts and, and your questions, our study did account for pedestrian volumes in our analysis, both through the counts as well as the analysis of all the eight study intersections, just so the record's clear.
Right, I think I might come back for the second round. Something was on my mind, and it's completely gone for now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night. All right. Next up is Charlie Cretaville. Mr. Cretaville, are you there?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're on.
Okay, so I guess I want to get started with the capacity analysis. It's on page 11. It was already alluded to earlier, our ratings for different turning movements at the intersections in question. And just for the record, they're A through F, and F is the worst one, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so I see here Hardenberg slash Gilden and Hamilton, as was alluded to earlier, is, you know, looking at 87.8 an F. And if you build this thing, it would go to even worth a 124.5. So tell me that 124.5, that means it would take more than two minutes to make that movement, to make a left turn?
Per the analysis, yes.
Okay, and is that acceptable in a, in a dense populated area like this to have intersections this kind of, uh, you know, extreme F rating?
Yes.
Okay, and you, you still don't think that there is a need for a signal at that intersection even accounting for the fact there's a, now a nine-story building at that corner as well?
That is correct.
No signalized intersection, people should just have to wait two minutes to make that turn?
Yes, but I would point out to you that the right turn volume we're adding to that specific approach. We assigned it to that approach to be conservative. The reality is somebody could come out to Division Street from this project and make a right turn from Division Street onto Hamilton Street. And if indeed they did that, the impacts as identified in our report specifically to the intersection that you've raised would be a lot less.
Sure. And that's not the only intersection with a degradation in the service level. Uh, the entire intersection, overall, all movements for Easton and Somerset, it goes from a D to a D. Uh, is that correct?
In the PM peak hour, that is correct.
Right, are there any intersections that improve?
No.
Okay, so, uh, I'm just curious why you haven't suggested or proposed any improvements uh, to address the, the, the lower levels of service, you know, maybe not signals, but you don't have any, any plans for any type of improvements to, to, uh, you know, ease the flow of traffic here?
As it relates to the Hardenberg intersection that you, you raised with Hamilton Street, look, it's a four-legged stop-controlled intersection. That's very close to the signal at the Eastern Avenue intersection. So practically speaking, proposing a traffic signal at this stop-controlled intersection so close to the signal at Eastern Avenue does not make sense whatsoever. You don't meet warrants for a traffic signal at that intersection. Um, and if you don't meet warrants for a signal, and it's not practical to put one in that close to Eastern Avenue, it would just create more issues operationally than it would solve. Yes, in my opinion, there's no appropriate improvement for that intersection. But again, I would point out the traffic we're adding to that, we did so conservatively to put forth a worst-case scenario. And the fact of the matter is that people will have two options to get to Hamilton Street. They can use either Hardenberg or they could use Division. If we were to assign more to Division, the Division and Hamilton, Hamilton Street intersection operates fairly well.
Understood. I'll, I'll move on. Um, you say you, your firm does a lot of business with Robert Wood Johnson. It's also fair to say you do a lot of business with Devco?
Yes, and Charlie, you and I have seen each other at many, many public hearings and many, many late nights, so yes.
Yes, and it's good to see you tonight virtually.
You as well, in these crazy times.
So can you tell us who, who asked you or who asked your firm to start doing the work on this? Was it Robert Wood Johnson or was it Devco?
Um, I'll object to that question. It's not relevant to the report. That's.
That's, uh, an objection should be sustained. Mr. Cradaville, do you have another question?
I'm, I'm sorry, you believe it's not relevant, Mr. Eithel?
Do you have another question, Charlie?
Sure, sure. Um, I, I am curious, at least when were you, you, uh, when was your firm first engaged on this?
Equally not relevant.
Same objection sustained.
Previously, Mr. Roach testified that, uh, you know, the, the firm was retained uh, in, you know, April of 2019 and began the work. And then, uh, you know, at some point we're told that a specific site had been selected. Uh, Mr. Desario, you established basically a similar timeline. Can you tell me, when did you learn that there had been a site selected?
It's also not relevant.
Sustained.
Okay, you've been to the site, sir? Yes, I was asking, you've, you've been to the site, Mr. Desario?
Yes.
Mr. Cradaville, you're, you have a one, you're at one minute, just letting you know. Okay, and, uh, when you, you've been to the site, were you there, uh, when the school was in session, when it was open?
I've been to not the specific site when the school has been in session, but I've been past the school when it's been in session plenty of times.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm glad you got to see that site and I hope we get to see it again. Um, this is, uh, you know, truly a neighborhood asset. And, uh, for the record, there's only a couple of buses that are needed for that school because most of the students walk. Um, it was said earlier, you did not account for any added traffic. Uh, how do the peak times compare, uh, that you've identified for, for this, uh, area? How do those compare to say the hours that school buses would be on the roads if the school had closed and every student would have to be bused because the location of the new school would be, uh, in the industrial area town where no one lives. Uh, did you, you, you said you didn't account for any, any buses. Is there a reason that you didn't account for that? Don't you think that would be a major change going from just a couple of buses to whole neighborhood needing to be bused, 750 kids?
So we did account for any school traffic that occurred between six to nine in the morning and two to six in the evening uh, by virtue of when we conducted our traffic counts. So all, if the school was generating traffic on that particular day, which I believe it was, um, we count it for it.
All right.
Okay. Next up, Jessica Cradaville.
Hi, yes, thank you, uh, for your time, everyone here. I did want to pick up where Charlie had left off in that you said, Mr. Desario, that your study included the traffic that was being generated by this school at the time of the study in April 2019. But as Charlie mentioned, most of the students walk to the school at this time. There are going to be people that need to be bused now. Uh, what kind of provision would you make for that increased bus traffic?
We've applied a background traffic growth rate to the existing volumes, which results in a 5% increase of every volume for every movement at all eight intersections.
Do you have any more questions with Cradaville?
Did we lose you? Are you there?
I was gonna say, I think you were on mute.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, now.
I'm sorry. Oh, I have a technical difficulty here. Um, do you not think that, uh, all of the children in the neighborhood school needing to leave that immediate area might exceed your 5% increase of potential traffic at peak times?
No.
Okay, um, I have a question about the pedestrian impact. I know there was a great deal of concern about the children getting hit by ambulances at the current location of the school. Uh, is there not a concern of the cancer patients getting hit by an ambulance?
None that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, have you done, uh, as, as Mr. Hughes brought up, were there pedestrian safety impact studies done in the area?
No.
Okay, so I, I, I mean, I'm really concerned about pedestrian safety. Uh, that's really important as somebody who does walk around a lot. I kind of don't want to get hit by a car. And I'm pretty sure the cancer patients don't want to either. Um, was there a provision made for the patient drop-off area for specific safety concerns about people being dropped off and that interference that is made to the traffic pattern by people pulling over and letting out and picking up patients?
All of the pickup drop-off for the cancer pavilion will be made interior to the site. So there won't be any pickup or drop-off activity occurring along the surrounding roads.
Okay, that, that kind of, um, I think that, that, that might not be accurate because when a pickup and drop-off area is congested, people will make other provisions. Or they say, oh, I don't want to get caught up in that traffic near that area. And they would do spontaneous pickup and drop-off, which may not be permitted by the, the traffic laws, but it is going to happen and that people really need to consider. So I think that a safety, um, study of that type of activity in an urban area really needs to be considered. I know you, you, you talked about the Memorial Swim Kittering and Basking Bridge, but without the type of urban traffic that you have in New Brunswick, I don't think it's, it's fair to say that that's an equal comparison because other people, people in that area may not feel.
Mr. Eithel, this is veering into comment. Is, we need to work some questions into this.
I'm sorry, I have more questions. Um, so uh, I wanted to talk about, you mentioned briefly if the parking deck was not approved, um, what type of provisions would be made? And I was confused because I thought that was provisional.
One minute warning.
There was a hypothetical, I believe, raised by one of the board members that if the parking garage, um, would not come to fruition and cancer pavilion people such as staff, patients, doctors, would have to park elsewhere, how would that change the traffic study? And what I answered was, if you were to move where people would park for the cancer pavilion from a future garage to somewhere else, it would change our traffic study. But if you move to multiple locations um, where people would park for the cancer pavilion itself, I would respectfully submit to you that the traffic impacts would be less than what we've put forth in our study because we've assumed that all the cancer pavilion traffic, and again, it's conservatively estimated in my opinion, would come to this site. So it's focusing all the traffic associated with the cancer pavilion to this specific site. And that would translate into greater traffic impacts than if people parked in multiple lots spread around the city.
Okay, what? Uh, I did want to ask if there was an, um, if you had thought about how public transit may be used by employees or patients of the cancer center and that that might cause an increase in bus traffic in the area?
We did not look at that, no.
Okay, well, I've reached the end of my questions. I appreciate the time of Mr. Desario and the board. Thank you and everyone have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Koulass. You there?
Uh, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. You're on.
All right. Uh, thank you. Uh, the first question I, I have, I just want to make clear is that this traffic study has been focused on is that correct?
We're losing you. You were a little broken up, but I think your question, I think your question was the traffic study focused on auto traffic or vehicle?
No, uh, the, uh, the traffic study was focused on congestion and not traffic safety.
It was focused on traffic operations and evaluating the changes to those?
Okay, all right. Um, did you, would you consider traffic safety, public safety in many ways? Would you find there's a correlation between the two, traffic safety and public safety?
I think safety applies to the general public, yes.
Okay, so did you, uh, maybe enlist any information from the State Department of Transportation? Just to get their advice, their input, anything from a traffic safety, public safety measure?
The DOT has no jurisdiction over any of the roads within the study area, so no.
Oh, okay, so, um, we have brought up Route 18 though. And Route 18 is a high proximity to the location we're talking about. So we even mentioned, I think you mentioned the last traffic light, uh, when they redid 18, you spoke of the last traffic light. So there, there is a lot of, um, a lot of details that get involved at this point, more than just a couple of blocks around the hospital. The hospital, uh, impacts the entire county even beyond, a lot more than a couple of blocks. I mean, it's a Level 1 trauma center. You're gonna not just have ambulances coming around, you're gonna have, uh, paramedics behind them. And, uh, basically, um, you know, I, I would, just getting to my points, you know, you haven't really, have you asked any information, local towns, Highland Park, East Brunswick, any towns, their input on what maybe could be taking place here as far as how it's gonna impact them?
No.
Somerset Franklin, no, because East Brunswick is, has their redevelopment plan. It's gonna include 800 apartments. That's 800 apartments right along the Route 18 corridor, much less probably about two, three miles from the area that we're talking about. So it's not just about the hospital, it's about everything that's going on. I haven't heard George Street mentioned once. George Street is what, maybe the length of a mile?
Could you please formulate this as a question?
Okay, sure, um, fair enough. The amount of traffic lights between Route 18 and the train station is four. How do you feel at peak hours, we're talking from Route 18, the first traffic light, just to the train station is four traffic lights? How do you feel that type of impact is going to have on traffic when you have four traffic lights? You're already talking about two minutes on a left turn. Let's forget about making a left turn. Let's just talk about trying to go straight. Um, basically, you overflow that to Highland Park just from, um, River Road to Woodbridge Avenue. I, I'm trying to, what I understand that you're talking about two square blocks around the hospital, but I'm talking about the county. And the county, the people.
You still didn't get to, you still didn't get to a question.
Well, I'm speaking and this is my time, so I'm allowed.
It's not, it's not your time for speaking.
Fine, all right, all right. Well, let me, let me, let me ask a question then. Let me ask a question.
Please.
My car just lost its transmission. Now I have to go to social services, which means that I have to take the 815 or the 818 to the New Brunswick train station where I have to pick up the M-PAT, which is about another 30 minutes to social services.
Adam Chair.
I'm, I'm trying to speak, but he's, he's speaking over me. You have, this is, this is a period for cross-examination. You're allowed to ask questions, questions of the witness pertaining to his testimony. It's not a portion for public comment. So if you have questions, please ask them.
All right, uh, let me just overflow. All right, so, all right, basic questions. Have you considered the Rutgers buses, Coach USA? Have you considered the Middlesex County bus routes, 810, 811, 815, 818, which all pick up at the New Brunswick train station? I also haven't heard any discussion about Little Albany Street. Little Albany Street is the.
Again, sir, please, you, this is a portion.
Okay, all right, I will ask you a question. How do you expect ambulances and paramedics to get the, to get to the emergency room at Robert Wood Johnson where it is located right now, which is pretty much directly across from Lincoln Annex? How do you expect them to not have an impact trying to just get up Little Albany Street? Or through Easton Avenue or Somerset? How is that not public safety?
Excuse. Arvin, I don't, I, I have said it several times. I'm not sure he understands. This is a, you need to ask a question of this witness. It's a cross-examination period, not a commentary.
I just asked, I just asked, how are you going to expect ambulances to get up Little Albany Street? We're talking about, you know, ambulances going to the ER, which is.
Mr. Koulass? I, I think you asked the question. Desario? Can you answer that question?
Yes, and, and so the record is clear. The cancer pavilion will not have ambulances in an emergency situation. They will have basically transport ambulances that might be transporting a cancer patient from their home to the facility for treatment. Any emergency-related ambulances go to Robert Wood Johnson just like they do today and just like they will in the future in the same way. if the board's inclined to approve this application and the cancer pavilion is built.
Do you feel there'll be no effect and change in anything? Everything's just going to stay the same as according to your report?
As it relates to emergency ambulances accessing the hospital, without question. And hopefully, everyone on this call is a law-abiding citizen. And when they hear the ambulance sirens going, they move out of the way to allow it to pass.
And I've been a New Brunswick resident before. No, I was just gonna say, I've been a New Brunswick resident before and I've literally had to drive up on the sidewalk where Johnson &amp; Johnson is to do exactly what you just said, to be a courteous driver. I had to literally hop the curb.
Excuse me, excuse me again, this is a question, you can ask questions.
Well, actually, Ms. Chair, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
I am done, I'm, I'm fine, I'm good. I, I've made my point.
Next up is Macbeth. Are you there, Macbeth?
McGaffney?
Oh, uh, yeah, I may, I may have typed it wrong. All right, yes, McGaffney.
Oh, boy, how do I follow that? All right, uh.
If you would have said present, I would have laughed out loud. If you know what that references to, it's a comedy skit, but, but go ahead, I digress.
Okay, so I live on Hardenberg Street across from, uh, what is presently the school. Um, previous part of this meeting, uh, the marathon meeting that keeps on going, uh, the construction period was suggested as being three and a half years. So I was curious if your traffic, uh, reports might have any information, what the traffic is going to be like during that construction period?
It does not, no.
Okay. Uh, so this, basically, the information that you have, uh, projected to be, uh, it, it starts after every construction is complete.
Correct.
Okay, um, I also manage sanctum body piercing on Eastern Avenue across from your beloved Stuff Your Face and Thomas Sweets. Uh, you've mentioned them, so surely you, you understand how really important these small businesses are to our community here and to our, our city. Um, it's not unusual for my clients who come from out of the city to have to cancel their appointments because they can't find any kind of parking or way around the traffic. Uh, will, uh, there be any kind of consideration for just general public that want to be in, in the area that might be affected by all of the loss of the residential parking that Comrade Chapman had mentioned earlier?
I, I do not know if there's gonna be any provision.
Okay, um, so, uh, he did mention like the loss of those dozens of, of parking spaces. We don't know if there's any, any kind of mitigation for that.
Correct. I do not know. Personally, I do not know, no.
Okay, um, I know in the plans earlier, it was mentioned there will also be a certain amount of, uh, bicycle allowance and parking in that area. Um, now, I was wondering, because you had mentioned that your reports were a little bit, uh, lacking in consideration of, uh, pandemic patterns, the new construction that had just been built on Eastern and Hamilton, um, and the fact that, you know, the, the schooling would be different. Uh, has there been any kind of consideration to, to update the studies, uh, considering the, the analyzation was done from all the videos that were all taken at the same time? It doesn't seem to be difficult to obtain that kind of information? Is, is there any kind of, uh, consideration to maybe update with the new considerations that we have since April of 2019?
No, and our study, again, respectfully submitted to you, is conservative and I think overstates the traffic impacts associated with this cancer pavilion.
Okay, um, now, in the plan submitted as well, we see skywalks and, uh, other ways of, uh, I guess, getting around in this area. Um, is there going to be any kind of, uh, I guess, mass transit consideration? Will there be added bus stops? Will there be added pathways to the train station? Any kind of, uh, just ways to get the neighborhood, uh, access to these, uh, ways that our city is able to get around?
One minute warning.
Thank you.
The plans depict, um, new sidewalks in terms of replacing the existing sidewalks and street scape improvements completely surrounding the site. On the three street frontages, Hardenberg, Somerset and Division Street, uh, beyond those, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, next up is, uh, Mione.
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
And again, it's, it's Matthew Mione. Um, do you need my middle name as well for the record?
Your clock is running.
Oh, it's running, okay. Um, let's see what we got here. I wanted to say hello to Mr., uh, you know, Desario, First Pizon, how you doing tonight?
Good, how about yourself?
I'm doing phenomenal, seventy-five in November, cannot complain about that.
Then you're doing really well, congratulations.
So my first question, more of a, kind of a general question. Um, what have you done in the past, like, year or so, year or so to kind of like improve your knowledge on traffic control, you know, specifically pertaining to a project like this?
I don't know how to answer that question, other than I'm engaged in the analysis of traffic operations, uh, the design of traffic signals, and the design of roundabouts on a daily basis in my practice. So I'm engaged with many aspects of traffic engineering study all the time. And not only to New Jersey, but I have projects as far away as Australia, uh, the west coast of the United States and all points in between.
Gotcha, awesome, and I got a question too, I guess probably for the board. Do, do Mr. Rosario's answers affect my five-minute time?
No.
Okay, yeah, just trying to be clear, so we get, you know, good answers, thank you. And so, that's awesome, no, it seems like you're very well experienced. Um, you know, you, you did say you went to Temple, correct?
I did.
Now, since this is a Rutgers town, is there any conflict of interest?
That, that's not my question.
No, but he, he, he's just, he's just being, he's just being funny. And look, I know Rutgers from the football program, definitely has had Temple's number over the years, including when I was there at eighty-seven, ninety-one. Basketball is a different story in the past, but it, it's a pretty good rivalry, but no conflict.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good. And so, did you say you were the one who actually accepted this, uh, contract? Or was it like your boss or something in the firm?
Not relevant.
Disdain.
Next question.
Oh, it's not relevant, why is that not relevant?
Do you have another question, sir? Do you have another question, sir?
I do, but that, that question, there's no elaboration on that question?
No.
Oh, interesting, okay, duly noted. Um, yeah, so next question we have here. I think through with this, uh, there was not a safety study, um, asked to be done by the board. Uh, in your professional opinion, should a safety study have been done?
No.
Why?
Because a safety study is separate and apart from what is required as part of a site plan application. What's required as a part of a site plan application is to assess traffic impacts associated with the increase of traffic associated with what's being proposed. As it relates to the street frontages of this project, there are provisions being made for, uh, enhanced sidewalks and other street scape-type improvements along the street frontages. And that is the applicant's obligation to provide those kinds of elements that relate to accommodating pedestrians. But beyond that, it's not required of this application.
Gotcha, okay, that clears it up, thank you for clarifying. And since it wasn't available already, uh, do you know when the parking deck plans will be available?
I do not, no.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. And before it was mentioned about how there's no ambulances going, you'd be going in the who and from the cancer pavilion. But since the ER is, you know, literally a hundred feet away, like right across the street from the cancer pavilion, you don't think that the added traffic will actually affect those ambulances?
I do not, no.
So more cars on the road won't make it harder for ambulances to get through?
No.
I, I'm sorry, obviously, I'm not a traffic control planner, but that does not add up to me. Do you care to elaborate a little bit more?
As I testified to earlier, when the ambulance is in an emergency situation and the sirens and the lights are flashing, it is incumbent upon every motorist on that road to make way for a clear path for that emergency vehicle to negotiate. And I applaud the resident who asked the question earlier. Putting your car up on the sidewalk is exactly what's needed at times. And I'm happy to hear that he did that, as would I, and hopefully as you would and everyone else would.
Oh, for sure, but we.
One minute warning.
It's not always possible on that road, obviously, right there on Somerset. I mean, we obviously know how many cars go up and down that road. Sometimes it's not really feasible to put your car on the sidewalk, you know, especially if there's bikers or pedestrians. So I don't, I don't really buy that it would be, wouldn't add to the ambulances possibly getting hindered.
Do you have any other questions, sir?
Yeah, I got a question. How much time do I have left?
Thirty seconds.
So, uh, Pizon, help me out here, what question would you ask if you were me, to you?
This is just, this is just Bill Torre. If he asks a question, he should ask it, if not, he should, we should move on.
Yes, I agree. Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, I got thirty more seconds, right?
Twelve.
Please ask a question.
Twelve more seconds, okay, I'm sorry, I have a list of questions, I'm just going through real quick. I'm at my, the bottom of it.
And time.
Okay, next, next, uh, on the list.
Danielle Moore.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Moore.
Yes. Well, most of you do know I am a traffic person, where I do keep up with traffic throughout the city of New Brunswick. You said this was planned in two thousand nineteen. Have, have you spoken to the county or to New Brunswick Traffic Authority about this?
Me personally, I have not, no, ma'am.
Well, I think this is why you need to redo this, because due to where you have so much that is planned to be done and it surely will interact with this. I didn't hear from the beginning, w- will parts of Somerset Street be blocked off with this project?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So nothing at all, part of, on Somerset at all will be blocked off through this three and a half years for Somerset Street?
That was testified to by Mr. Roach and noth, nothing will be blocked.
Not even to build a bridge to connect to the hospital?
That was his testimony.
Hello?
Yeah, that was his testimony, that traffic will, the street will not be blocked.
Well, see, this is one reason why I say you need to talk to the traffic authority and you, uh, as, as well, you, I, I believe you know, Mr. Dominguez, due to where you're part of the traffic authority meeting, due to where, wow, you have a project that's again, on the corner of French and Eastern Avenue, where they sit down the side, that's right in the area where that's going to be cut off as well to finish the project there with the new light and everything changing there. That's one, and then as well, you do know, you do know also about the Landing Lane Bridge was approved to be removed and redone. Uh, you do know as well, French Street, the Damon Lewis, there, uh, due to where the report of so many accidents over there that the city and the county is working on either no left turn or delayed green. So I think due to where this was done in two thousand nineteen, I think you need to do an update of what's going on now with the different changes of the route.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Moore?
Uh, this is my, my question, so, uh, well, would, so would you please answer? Will you get a new update from the traffic authority and the, uh, New Brunswick County Freeholders of what are the projects that are being done? Because I don't see how you're going, you're going to be able to do this if they're cutting off the roads to do their repairs.
None of, none, none of what you've, uh, identified pertains to this eight intersections that we've analyzed. And, and just so we're all clear, if the board grants approval prior to the start of the construction, the applicant's engineer needs to coordinate with the city specifically relating to construction of this project. It's pre, it's.
That's why I said you see this in.
One minute warning.
This is two thousand twenty, due to where you didn't know that these things are going to be done. So this is why I'm saying I think you need to talk to the traffic authority and the Middlesex County Freeholders, what they're doing to their road that's going to interact with this. Just as well, you said three and a half years to this, and then what? It was just approved on Plum Street, Plum and Somerset Street, where Robert Wood Johnson to add another, uh, at least eight, eleven-story building where they're taking over the parking lot there.
Madam Chair.
Yes, yes.
Chair, this is Arvin Ito, Ford attorney. If I could just interrupt, Ms. Moore, do you have a question regarding the traffic testimony that Mr. Rosario provided?
Yes, that he, due to where my point is, and like I said, my question is, I think he needs to investigate, and I'm asking where he needs to investigate due to where he did, this is back in two thousand nineteen.
Time.
This is.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
My time is not.
The next up is Rubens.
So my first question, I just wanted to clarify. Your report accounts for the building of the parking deck or does it?
I, I'm sorry, I, I, you were breaking up there, could you please repeat it?
Sure, I just want to clarify, your report does account for the parking deck?
The report does not, it, it does not account for the parking deck. It accounts for the traffic that will be generated by the cancer pavilion. What's been previously testified, as I understand it, is that the parking deck will provide the parking supply with which people associated with the cancer pavilion will park.
Correct, but do you anticipate any extra traffic as a result of the deck? Uh, because I'm not sure, I know you're familiar with the area, but as we know, George Street, uh, which has several parking decks, very frequently gets gridlocked and backed up as a result.
As it relates to the.
You don't anticipate any impact?
As it relates to the cancer pavilion, we've accounted for all the traffic the cancer pavilion would generate. We have not done a study yet for the parking deck.
But the passing of the pavilion is sort of linked to the passing of the parking deck, correct?
I don't know that to be the case.
I can respond to that. We, we did offer to accept as a condition, should the board want to, should the board want to approve it or include it, that, that approval of a parking deck, um, is a condition of construction of the, uh, of the pavilion.
So do you plan to make any projections of how the parking deck would impact the traffic situation?
That would be part of that application.
All right. So, next question. Um, as a traffic engineer, in your just professional opinion, do you have any thoughts on a direct consequence of this project, which is sending children to a school in an area where traffic accidents are very frequent?
It's not relevant to, to what his testimony or what he prepared.
Madam Chair, I'd sustain that.
Do you have any other? Do you have any other questions?
Yes, I do. Uh, in your projections, have you accounted for sort of incidental, uh, traffic and visits to the buildings, such as deliveries, anything of that nature? Aside from regular patients? Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I heard in a previous testimony, some mention of a loading dock being included in the plan. Can you confirm that?
Dan, I couldn't, I didn't agree with the question. Could, could you repeat it, Ms. Rubens?
Sure. In a previous testimony, there was some mention of a loading dock being constructed in the area, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that the loading, the loading dock for the pavilion will be part of the garage and part of that application.
Okay. Um, do you have any sense of when that the hearing for that application will be happening? When we get to see some plans for this?
In the, in the near future.
Okay, well, since we seem to have very little information about this plan or any really relevant details, I guess I I'll hopefully you're able to provide
Yeah, again, you were, you were breaking up.
I said that since there seem to be public available right now, we're very little about some Hopefully we get that information soon.
Ms. Rubens, did you have any additional questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up is Romero.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my question to the engineer, I don't have the plans in front of me, but, and your presentation in front of me, uh, can you repeat, uh, what the, um, current, uh, estimate of traffic is and, um, what the traffic will be with the, um, uh, cancer center and the, um, parking deck?
Madam Chair, if this is to repeat his direct, uh, I think that, and Mr. Liebling, if you don't want to object to that, it certainly seems to me that the, the repeating what was already provided on direct, uh, is, is really not the purpose of cross.
You, you beat me to it, Mr. Ito.
Sorry, so that, so that was a
Do you have any other questions, sir?
Uh, okay, so, uh, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, what I heard you say was that there was gonna be an increase of, uh, three hundred cars during the, during the morning hour, correct?
Yes, a little, a little more. Three hundred thirty-five cars would come into the cancer pavilion.
Wow.
During the morning peak hour, correct?
That's insane. And how do you, is there gonna be a widening of the, uh, roads, like on Somerset Street or something like that? Is there gonna be like a two-lane, um, road, uh, each way?
No.
So do you not expect there to be a much higher, um, traffic and also, um, you know, when people are making a left turn onto, onto, uh, that street there? With an extra
There, there's not a, there's not a question? Could, could you ask me a question about that, please?
Shut up. Hey, no, my question, my question is, how much more do you expect, uh, traffic to be, uh, increased, since you're gonna have an extra three hundred cars on an intersection where people are gonna have to make a left turn? If I'm not mistaken, you said that the wait time was gonna be two minutes to make a left turn, so I'm asking what you expect to be the, uh, increase in, uh, in time and traffic?
Oh, that intersection, so you're referring to, um, Harderburg and Hamilton? So that intersection, um, during the morning peak hour, there would be eleven additional vehicles, uh, going northbound on Hardenburg, making the right turn, and there would be forty additional vehicles in the evening peak hour going northbound on Hard, Hardenburg, making a right onto Hamilton. So eleven and fourteen, morning peak hour, evening peak hour, respectively. Again, less than one additional vehicle per minute.
I see. So that is still including, um, so that area where the, the cars are parked on Somerset Street in front of the hospital, that area is not gonna be for parking anymore? Now it's gonna have like, is that gonna be, is that gonna become a two-lane road?
The lanes along Summer Street in front of the site will continue to be one lane in each direction. So it, it is a two-lane road, and it'll continue to be a two-lane road. We're not proposing widening.
So I was trying to, uh, ask if it is, was if that parking area where the cars are parked, if that wasn't gonna be parked anymore, and you're gonna have two lanes each way, meaning four lanes total? That's what I
The, the answer is no.
Okay, I see. Uh, the other question that I have is about the, um, um, the sidewalks. You mentioned there was gonna be, uh, renewed, redone sidewalks. Um, and I, really, the real question I'm trying to ask is, um, why wasn't there any planning for the, um, for bike lanes? Like, if I'm not mistaken, Somerset Street only has painted bike lanes, but if you look at somewhere like College Avenue, there's actually like bike lanes that are designated with a protective barrier. So my question, my question is, why, why does that not happen on
One minute warning.
I'm not sure that's anything that Mr. DiSario testified to or was part of his study. I'm not sure I could answer that.
Stand.
Do you have any more questions, sir?
That's the, uh, ask who is going to be in charge of the, um, of the parking deck that is gonna be, uh, built?
That's a different application. Do you have, do you have any more questions for this witness?
Hmm, no, I don't. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Stork.
Hi. Good evening to the board and to Mr. DiSario.
Good evening.
Um, so, yes. My question is, okay, so the, the intersections that were included in the study, the problem as I see it, and from where I live and have to get around the city, is that all those cars have to get to those intersections? So, you know, I don't doubt the, you know, the accuracy of your study, you know, the video saw whatever it saw, but, um, these, uh, the access routes that you're talking about, ten percent from Easton, well, Easton during that whole afternoon rush, more than an hour, is backed up to where people sit through multiple lights and people, um, can hardly get out from the side streets onto Eastern Ave. So that's already the situation. So even ten percent of them heading up Easton, uh, to go home is going to be a problem. And the twelfth percent out of Hamilton, twenty-two percent out Somerset. Oh, yeah, I do. So, um, my question is, um, how did they, um, was, was, how did you determine? You're looking at this, the car coming through this intersection, but was there any way of knowing that that car to get there already sat through? Because it gridlocks coming across town. Okay, if you come down Easton and come over, um, and, and you come over like Courtland to Lewis, and then up to either Somerset or Hamilton, where the lights are? So you would think the light would at least guarantee you a chance. Like, I know how people
Almost had a question out. You almost had a question out.
So when you said, like, when people get hung out there for the left turn, and it, and it can take two minutes, you called them, um, dilemma vehicles? And, and so what you were saying is that when they turn, it's actually gonna be lower because that's actually efficient, because they're making a turn? But the problem is, um, did you account for, let me make a question. Did you account for the fact that when, that, when you're, when you get hung out there trying to make the left turn, it's actually gridlocked, so the people can't, so then the traffic can't move?
I tell the board attorney, Ms. Stork does not appear to have a question. It's
I, I understand that.
It is a question.
I still have
Can you give him an opportunity to answer?
We're talking about the dilemma vehicles, and my question is, when you're saying that it would actually be quicker if you accounted for the fact that they're making a left turn actually on yellow, or it can happen on red too, because, but it's not people trying to get away with something, it's because it's gridlocked. So did you account for the fact that instead of making it quicker, it's actually gonna make it slower because the traffic can't move in the other direction? That was my question. Sorry, it took me a long time to get to it.
Oh, that, that's okay. So all the traffic that we counted traversing all the study intersections, we've accounted for, and we've built a network in terms of, for purposes of analysis, where all eight intersections are evaluated and analyzed all at once. So Easton and Hamilton and Easton and Somerset are interacting with each other as part of the analysis model that we put together. So the short answer to your question is, yes, we've accounted for the interactions of adjacent intersections.
Okay. Okay. And, and how about the, um, so then how about the next intersections over, like, but the, the additional traffic that will be created to get to those intersections, like on the main thoroughfares that everybody's already using for other reasons?
One minute warning, Stork. We have not looked at or analyzed or evaluated any intersections beyond the eight that we have studied for this application.
Uh, okay, so, um, I also, would you, and when you said that post-COVID, you thought it would be less because of telecommunication, did you think also it might be more because people, like just the regular commuters, not the hospital traffic, but the traffic that's already out there, people aren't wanting to carpool, or the people that used to take mass transportation don't want to take it anymore? Because I'm seeing a lot of traffic back out here again, and I know everybody's not back to work.
In my opinion, and it's only opinion at this point, I do believe wholesale changes and way people do their work and commute are changing. And I do believe more people are gonna work from home, and maybe it's not all five days a week, but maybe it's a couple of days a week, and then they come into the office or wherever their place of business is, a couple of days. But I do think in terms of a wholesale look at this region, and we could look at, say, greater Middlesex, Somerset County, I do believe traffic volumes on all the roads added up together will be less post-COVID than they are or were pre-COVID for those reasons.
Okay. Um, yeah, I hope you're right for the sake of what's this, what's gonna do to the traffic situation, but, um, um, did, uh, when, when you were speaking about the, um, like, the pulling over for the ambulance, the traffic the way it is? Did you realize that that's impossible to do on those streets? Because I, I had to do this commute, and you can't, you sit through, literally, it took me, and it would take a half hour to get by, from by St. Peter's over to the public library to do a store there in the afternoon.
Stork, your time is
Ms. Stork, your time was up before that question, I mean, before that statement you just made, so, uh,
Next up.
Any questions you have in the public comments?
Next up is Tucker.
Hello?
Hi. You're on.
All right. Um, so I visited the, the Basking Ridge thing. Are you aware of the population difference between New Brunswick and that contains the other hospitals you looked at?
No.
Okay, um, well, it has about twice the population, but more importantly than that, oh, I'm breaking up? Can anyone hear me?
I, I can hear you. I'll let you know. I'll, I'll, I'll let you know if you're breaking up. You were a little bit, but I, I understood the question.
Okay, um, well, more importantly, the population density in New Brunswick is about five times that of Basking Ridge. Um, do you believe that this wouldn't have an impact on the amount of pedestrian and vehicle collisions that occur?
I do not, and as I stated earlier, I think people, more people drive their cars to Basking Ridge to go to Memorial Sloan Kettering than people would drive to this cancer pavilion because of the fact that, and it's a great asset of the city, a robust mass transit system, both buses and trains.
Oh, yeah, I was, um, I, I was trying to get across that there's more pedestrian traffic in New Brunswick because the population is more dense, but, um, regardless, we can move on from that. Um, so have you analyzed the traffic at all, um, when school was just beginning or letting out, uh, around the area?
No.
Okay. Somebody's
Hold on, yeah.
Can that not count towards my time? Um,
I think that would be fair. Somebody was definitely using a blender there to make something.
Okay, um, okay, so do you, do you think that, did you catch my last question, or?
Mr. Dominguez said, yeah, he added fifty seconds.
Oh, thank you very much.
Second, sorry.
Oh, fifteen.
Yeah, that's fine, anyway, anyway. Um, so you said that you did not analyze the traffic when school was just beginning or just letting out. Do you think that that would represent maybe a significant difference from the data that you collected already?
So maybe I, I misunderstood your question. If you meant when Rutgers starts a school year or ends a school year?
No.
And that's how I answered the question, so forgive me, I misunderstood. No, we did do counts that would encompass when school starts, both local public schools as well as Rutgers, and when school ends, um, during the afternoon, because our counts were done at six in the morning to nine in the morning, and from two in the afternoon to six in the evening.
Right, right. Okay, um, so you don't think that there's an increased risk, risk of, like, traffic accidents at these times?
I can't opine on when accidents occur and for what reasons they occur.
Okay. Um, have you taken into account the increase of vehicles as children have to be driven around to take buses to school?
Not specifically, but again, as I testified to earlier, we've increased all the volumes we identified by five percent, and that means every single movement at every single approach, at every single intersection of the eight study intersections that we evaluated. So we have accounted for an increase in traffic, some of which may be attributed to additional buses on the road, uh, for the schoolchildren.
Okay, um, just because I don't really know anything about traffic numbers, uh, could you contextualize what five percent means in terms of increased traffic? Like, you know, from, maybe from one time of day to another, what, what a percentage would look like like that? Because I'm not entirely sure to understand what that actually means.
So as an example, if you had a particular through movement at an intersection, and it was a thousand vehicles, today, we've increased it to be a thousand fifty vehicles in the future.
Oh, no, I, I know the math. I just mean, like, could you, like, contextualize that in a way that somebody who doesn't, like, count vehicles as they go through an intersection would, would think of it? Like, is this, is a thousand vehicles at, like, rush hour? Does fifty more vehicles, like, what kind of effect does that have usually on traffic? If, if you know, I mean, is there, is there some way to make it a little less like dark?
So to answer your question, we've assumed at every intersection, every left turn volume, through volume, and right turn volume that were identified in those peak hours would increase by five percent. Now, if you were to look at specific project, and let's take an example, the residential development that's going up at the northwest corner of Easton and Hamilton. The traffic associated with that project, and I, I did work on that project, and I anticipate that's gonna be marketed to Rutgers students, and not necessarily be, um, people that are non-students, but nonetheless, even if they are, that project in and of itself is not going to add five percent increase in volumes of every movement of every intersection that we studied, as an example, just to help you, uh, contextualize it, as you said. So us, us making the assumption and increasing the volumes that we have in the fashion that we have, we've put, again, built in another level of conservative evaluation as it relates to traffic impact.
Um, do you have any data that would be available to us on, um, prior, like, projects of this scope and, like, the after, like, the actual effect of, of the traffic changes after the fact? Do you guys do, like, studies on that, or?
I don't have any, no.
Okay. That's pretty much it for my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so that is our first initial list. Is there anyone that we missed? That wanted to, I mean, the, the traffic engineer? Yes? All right, Mr. Tarbus. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Matt Smith.
Matt Smith. Anyone else?
May I ask an additional question? Ed Chapman?
You may not until public comment. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close that, and we will allow Mr. Smith and Mr. Tarbus to speak. Mr. Smith, you're up. You have five minutes.
Mr. Smith, please give us your address.
I'm sorry?
Your address, please.
Yes, 123 Livingston Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My question, my first question, is whether or not there was any associated with the traffic study, if there was any assessment of the additional emissions that would come from the, I'm sorry, what was the exact number of estimated additional car trips resulting from the construction of the cancer pavilion?
410 in the morning peak hour and 335 in the evening peak hour.
Okay, so roughly 750, you know, per day. Was there any assessment of the additional emissions that would result from 750 daily additional car trips, not including the parking terminal?
No.
And do you ever look at emissions related to increased traffic? Is that ever part of the scope of your work?
It is not.
Okay. Is there a reason why that was not included in the work for this particular project?
That is not part of a traffic study evaluation.
Did the traffic study evaluation look at, in addition to those car trips, additional truck trips as a result of the cancer pavilion?
Yes.
And how many truck trips were expected?
They are part of the estimated trip generation numbers that you and I just spoke about. We haven't broken them out specifically, but they're inherent to the, in those numbers.
Okay, so you don't know what percentage of the roughly 750 daily car trips are from heavy-duty trucks?
So let me just make sure you understand that 700 trips you're referencing are for the morning peak hour and the evening peak hour. They're not for the daily trips. And the truck traffic that would be within those numbers is a small percentage. Exactly what they are, I don't have that information tonight.
Okay, and is there a reason why the specific impact associated with heavy-duty vehicles and trucks were not included in the scope of this study?
They have been. We've identified all the trucks and buses and any heavy vehicles that traverse the intersections today as part of our counts. And by virtue of increasing the traffic volumes attributed to what's going to be generated by the cancer pavilion, there's a proportionate increase in all the existing truck volumes at all the intersections, which is directly proportioned to the increase in traffic because of the cancer pavilion. So if there were 5% heavy vehicles, let's say, on a specific left turn movement today, based or in 2019, based on our traffic counts, and we added traffic volumes attributed to the cancer pavilion to that specific left turn movement, that increase in that left turn volume is going to account for an increase in truck traffic as well.
Right, but that's just based on the city average, not based on what's anticipated as a result of the cancer pavilion.
It's not the city average, it's actually what occurred and what we identified and what we counted at the eight study intersections. So in doing that, again, I would respectfully submit to you, it's conservative because we are assuming there's an increase in truck volume at every movement, at every intersection we analyzed by virtue of increasing the volumes associated at those intersections with the cancer pavilion.
Right, but the none of the intersections that you looked at had massive cancer pavilions, correct?
All the intersections had cancer pavilion volumes that we added to them.
Oh, so these are not intersections in New Brunswick. These are intersections with other cancer pavilions across the country, is what you're saying?
No, the eight intersections that we evaluated in New Brunswick have traffic volumes associated with them that we identified. They also have heavy vehicle traffic that we identified. The increase of volume attributed to the cancer pavilion at all those study intersections will inherently increase the truck traffic that we evaluated.
Okay, I think we're still not, I don't, yeah, I don't think my question's been answered because you're telling me yes, but what, then when you explain it, you're saying you're looking at traffic levels and what percentage are trucks from intersections in New Brunswick today? My point is none of those intersections have a cancer pavilion. And so a cancer pavilion fundamentally not just changes the volume of traffic, but it changes the kinds of traffic that will be coming. And therefore, the proportion of trucks versus cars, heavy-duty, light-duty vehicles. So is it true that none of that was looked at as part of this traffic impact study?
No, that's not true. We accounted for increases in volumes and increases in heavy vehicles as a result of those increases in volumes, both to account for background traffic.
But not specific to the pavilion.
Yes. Thank you. Next up is Mr. Tarbus.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Hello, Mr. DiSario.
Mr. Tarbus, your address.
I'm sorry, 411 New Market Road in Piscataway. Okay, Mr. DiSario, I did hear your testimony. I've not heard all of the cross-examination. There is a bit of clarification with respect to pedestrians. Does your, does your study include pedestrian traffic or just vehicular traffic?
It includes pedestrian volumes that we identified from the traffic counts.
Okay, and then you also, I believe you talked about the traffic signaling, right? At the intersections, you were, you know, with the traffic signaling art, do you, do you account for the walk and don't-walk sign signaling as part of that study?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to your trip generation, you talked about certain number of trips being generated with a destination of the cancer center. Do you have, was it all, were the sources of those trips also generated?
I'm not following your question.
Well, if you're, if you have, if you're assuming there's a trip, someone's making a trip, and their destination is the cancer center, that trip would also need to have a source, a place where the trip started.
Oh, an origin. Okay. Yes, an origin.
So you have origin data for those trips that you use?
We do not.
You do not? Okay. You did testify that you, you made a breakdown of the, I guess you call them, primary pathways? And you did have a breakdown by percentages, I believe. So how did you, how did you come to those conclusions if you had no source data for your trips?
The distribution percentages we identified replicate the existing patterns that we identified through the traffic volume counts that we did. So the traffic going through this specific area and all the directions of approaches and departures, that, so essentially, the existing travel patterns, we use those to identify what the cancer pavilion traffic would do.
So it does not include any characteristics of the cancer pavilion? Other than the volume? Is that right?
If you're asking, will we know where people live that work at the pavilion? No, we do not know that.
So you did not estimate that, but you, okay, but you do have estimates. Now, I believe I heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's the southern approach on Easton Avenue, which I guess is from the train station, is that right? That that would be 31% of the traffic. Am I getting that right?
Correct. You are, yes, you got it right. To and from that direction.
So that's from the Albany and Easton intersection? Is that one of the intersections that you would study?
We did not study that one, no, sir.
Did you, did you study Little Albany and Easton?
No, sir.
Okay, so I also heard that the busy hour would be 400 vehicles arriving in the morning busy hour?
No, sir. That's not correct. 335 would be arriving as an estimate.
Okay, 335 arriving as an estimate, and 31% from Easton Avenue would be approximately 90 vehicles per hour. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you also testified that there was nowhere that had more than one car per minute addition? You just answered my question confirming that there's 90 cars per minute coming on that, on that route.
Correct, and so my, so it's clear to you and everyone listening, my testimony was most approaches to all eight intersections would see an increase of one vehicle per minute or less.
So not all intersections?
All intersection approaches.
You said, you just said most, but it's not most, I mean, it's not all. They're saying it's most intersection of less than one. But there is, obviously, it seems like a greater than one car per minute increase on Easton Avenue from the south.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, you use the term "all intersections", and I clarified that for you. It's "all intersection approaches". And my testimony is that most intersection approaches, so the approaches to each of those eight intersections will see a increase in traffic conservatively of less than one additional vehicle per minute attributed to the cancer pavilion.
So when you say approaches, are you considering three approaches, like to the Easton and Somerset? Or just the primary approach that you expect the cancer pavilion traffic to come from?
Time.
Your time is up, Mr. Tarbus. Now, we will hear, we will hear closing arguments from the closing remarks from the attorney for the applicant. Mr. Leblin?
So, yeah, I'm unmuted now. Thank you, Madam Chair. We greatly appreciate the board's attention to the application this evening. And I do want to thank the public for the focused questioning of the traffic engineer relating to the testimony that, that he gave. That elicited a lot of valuable information. Regardless, as I'm sure the board is aware, established New Jersey law is that off-site traffic impacts are not a factor to be taken into consideration in the site plan application. To reiterate, the standard of review by this board, provided the applicant is able to show that the site plan complies with the redevelopment plan, it is entitled to an approval, subject to reasonable conditions. We believe the applicant has successfully made that showing, and we therefore request that the board approve the application at this time, subject to all agreed-upon conditions. I understand that public comment is to follow, but in the meantime, thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you for that. And I just want to address the board. It is a little after 10:00 now. And are there any objections to proceeding?
No objections.
Okay, hearing none, we will open, I, I'm going to ask for a comment. This will be general comment on the entire application. And I'm going to ask first the professionals, then the board members, and then again, go to the public. So right now, do any of the professionals have any questions regarding this application in total? I'm hearing none. And do any board members have any questions?
This is Bob Cardika.
Yes, Bob.
So why is the cancer pavilion and the associated parking deck and utility plant being submitted under separate applications? And isn't it fair to say that one can't exist without the other? So we're kind of being asked to approve of half of a project.
Mr. Cardika, this is Arvind Ito, the board attorney, and I can probably answer that question. Mr. Leblin, feel free to jump in if you believe that I'm not giving a complete or an accurate picture. The, the application that's before the board is for specific lots and blocks within a redevelopment area for the cancer pavilion. This is specifically for that. The standards for the cancer pavilion have been established in that redevelopment plan. That does not call for parking to be located on that site. However, the reality is that parking does need to occur someplace in the city. The applicant has indicated that he would accept as a condition of an approval, if the board were to approve the application tonight, that they would have to come back before this board, which would retain jurisdiction, and to provide a full testimony and application for the parking deck. And the condition of approval that this board has to the cancer pavilion could be that they receive approval for a parking deck.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Mr. Ito. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Cardika, I can elaborate, or certainly by all means, I didn't want to cut you off.
Well, again, the basis of my question is that on its face, the site plan, it's consistent with zoning, the no variances are requested. But that may not be the case for the, the adjacent, presumably adjacent parking facility. And, you know, what kind of position does that put the board in if we voted yes for one and no for the other? It just seems to me that these are kind of tied, they're tied together. And to ask us to vote for them separately is, you know, I'm just, I don't know if I am comfortable with that.
And Mr. Cardika, this is Arvind Ito. The condition that the applicant's indicated, and I'll let him speak for Mr. Leblin, speak on behalf of the applicant, but as I understand it, would be that the approval of this application, if the board were to consider that, would be conditioned on getting an approval for a parking deck as well. So no construction of this site could occur, the cancer pavilion could not occur, until the application for a parking deck has been heard by this, by this board, and has been approved by this board. If this board denies the application for the parking deck, they can't go forward with, with a construction permit and construct the cancer pavilion because the condition would not have been satisfied. So in terms of maintaining some ability to control the outcome here, the tactical decision to bifurcate, if you will, an application, that's not what this is. This is not a bifurcated application. But the practical effect is that there is a bifurcation. The parking would be heard as The parking would be heard as part of a separate application, and the condition of this approval for the, the, uh, Cancer Pavilion could be explicitly that they have to come back and they have to get an approval for the cancer, for the parking deck as well.
Uh, so, so does this mean that we would be providing preliminary rather than final approval? Is that, is that implied in, in what you're, um, in these, this condition?
And Mr. Cardica, uh, it's my opinion that the board can grant preliminary and final approval as it normally does with a condition that it come back, uh, the condition of the preliminary and final approval would be that they come back and get approval of a parking deck.
Just an associated question. Uh, define kind of preliminary and final. Uh, and, um, again, I'm, you know, a little hesitant with regard to the final approval, but, um, why are you coming to us with both preliminary and final, request for preliminary and final approval of this?
Right, our standard practice in New Brunswick has been to grant preliminary and final approval for site plans, especially if there's a site plan without any variances. It has no variances. However, if the board felt uncomfortable granting preliminary and final, another option the board had is certainly to grant a preliminary only. Um, and that would be obviously with the same condition, they'd come back with a approved, parking deck application. But the practical effect would be this, uh, would be very little. They can't build without a, if there's a condition that the parking deck be approved, they can't build the Cancer Pavilion.
Okay, I, I understand for, for reasons that I can't explain, I'm a little bit more comfortable granting preliminary approval. Uh, but, uh, um, yeah, that, that's all the questions I have at this time. I might have more before we're, before we're done here.
Thank, thank you, Bob, and I just want to thank you for, for waiting from the last meeting to answer your, to ask your questions at this part. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think I asked that question about 10 hours ago in this meeting.
Well, I just, I just want to thank you for your patience. Do any other board members have any questions at this point?
Yeah, John Pitrellino here.
Yes, John.
Yep, so, uh, first of all, I'll just echo what, uh, Mr. Cardica said. Um, does give me pause that the presentation of the application is meeting as, has been. I certainly understand that there are tactical reasons why, uh, applicant's counsel may have done it that way, but, uh, you know, I, I do think that there are a number of questions that emerge based upon that presentation that having been said. I want to thank Mr. D'Assario for his presentation, his patience, his, um, willingness to answer and entertain questions and his professional demeanor. I think he did an excellent job. Um, and certainly I would echo the sentiments with respect to, uh, Mr. Liebling's comment that the public has done a fantastic job of hearing and presenting an interested, uh, opinion and, uh, an informed with respect to this application. I, I do have significant concerns with regards to the traffic impact of this, uh, proposed use in this area. I certainly laud, uh, Robert Wood Johnson and their commitment to New Brunswick and their commitment to the treatment of cancer. Uh, I think it's a fantastic use. I question its location. Um, while, uh, Mr. D'Assario, I appreciate, uh, your patronage, Thomas Sweet, and stuff your face. I've lived by St. Peters Hospital for the past 14 years, and I can speak from personal experience that the traffic gets more and more difficult, uh, with each passing year. And, uh, I think the addition of this project in this specific location is, uh, going to make a very bad problem significantly worse. So I appreciate your position, and I respectfully disagree. Uh, that's, uh, that's my position. I don't really have a question, but I did want to go on record. I will stop at that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, John. Do any other board members have any, uh, questions or comments at this point? Uh, hearing none, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to, uh, Mr. Dominguez for a public comment, and I believe, uh, it's a three minutes, three minutes now, Mr. Dominguez?
Mr. Ito?
That's correct. Madam Chair, uh, the, uh, the public commentary will be a three-minute limit on public comments.
And, and just to, uh, let everybody know, this is public comment on this application only. There will be another portion of the meeting that's for general public comment, but this is for this application, anything pertaining to this application only. So if you want to take a list, Mr. Dominguez, and we can start that.
Yes, Madam Chair, I need to object to the, uh, unprecedented limitation of, of public comments to three minutes tonight. May I ask why the board is doing that and whose decision is it?
Madam Chair, this is Arvin Ito, the board's attorney. As the number of people that have expressed an interest in, uh, speaking about this application, both in terms of asking cross-examination questions and also making public comments during their cross-examination, uh, municipal land use laws, both the emergency remote public meeting protocol for local public bodies require that you give the general public a reasonable opportunity to comment. Uh, reasonable opportunity is not defined as one minute, or 12 minutes, or 18 minutes. It is taking the totality of the circumstances and all of the facts into consideration, based on the number of people and the desire of the board to hear from a maximum number of people. If you're prudent to limit the five minutes, which is normally given under normal circumstances, to these extraordinary circumstances, limit it to just three.
You say normally, normally since when?
Madam Chair, if I, uh, have Mr. Dominguez call members of the public.
I, I've got to reiterate this objection here. This is, uh, you know, basically you're saying because a lot of people are interested in this, we're gonna limit their. You, you represented the board when they heard the nine-street application. Why didn't you do this then? Why were we allowed to speak on that application? A much smaller application of less, with a less powerful.
Mr. Dominguez, can you, can you mute him?
Now that this big project with a big powerful caller, we get less time?
Mr. Dominguez.
Mr. Dominguez, can you mute him? And can we start a list for public comments, please?
Certainly.
For you to cut him off when he's trying to say something.
He'll have an opportunity to speak during public comments. We're not cutting anybody off from that.
All right, so, um, please be advo, no, wrong, wrong, sorry. At this time, we're preparing to open the, uh, hearing to public comment on this application in order to assure that the panel can hear, uh, from the interested public and the public can hear public comments. I will organize speakers in order by last name. In a moment, I will unmute the public call-in, but you'll, you'll have to unmute yourselves as we discussed earlier, star six people on their phones. I'll ask that those with the last name starting with A to provide me your last name, first name and home address. I'll confirm that the information is correct, and I'll move on to the next person alphabetically from A to Z. Upon the completion of asking for all last names from A to Z, I will ask one time, one more time for anyone who wants to be placed on the list of speakers. We'll then move through the list of speakers by calling the person by name and permitting them five minutes to speak. Once we complete the list, we'll once again check to see if anyone else would like to comment. After asking three times, I will then close the public comment portion. Please be mindful that your voice is being telephonically transmitted, and to speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of all, I will ask that you please remain silent, uh, so that we can hear each other and begin the speaker registration process. I'll ask that any member of the public who would like to comment on this hearing, on this application with the last name starting with A, please state your full name and address. A. E.
Um, sorry, A.
Yes?
Ariselli Gonzalez, North Brunswick.
Mr. Dominguez, you said we have, Mr. Dominguez, you said we have five minutes.
Sorry, three minutes.
Would you, would you like to restate, would you like to restate, is, would you please restate the entire?
I, I, would you, Mr. Ito, do I have to restate the whole announcement again?
Well, I understand.
Three minutes. Anyone else with A? B?
Yes, John Luke Fournier.
Fournier, okay.
River Street.
Anyone else for, for B? C?
Daniel Cruz.
Okay.
Ed Chapman.
And Cruz. Anyone else besides Sicconi and Cruz for C? Anyone else besides, uh, Elizabeth Sicconi and Cruz for C?
Ed Chapman.
Chapman, all right. D?
Jean Data.
Wonderful.
E?
Mika Deitch.
Oh, Deitch. Okay. E? F? G?
Daniel Hill Martin.
H?
Uh, yes, David Hughes, please.
Okay. I?
Hunt here, um, H, Hunt.
Hunt, all right, thank you. I? J?
Yeah, Ming Jiao, uh, New Brunswick.
All right, K?
Charlie Crass.
Ryan Kulas, oh, sorry. Ryan Kulas, okay, got it.
Jessica Cretavell.
Got it. L? M?
McGaff.
Andres.
Laura Mers.
All right, all right, let's walk that back a little. Who, M?
McGaffney.
McGaffney, who else?
Mers. Laura Mers.
Mers.
Matthew.
Matthew Moore.
More, okay.
Uh, Moreira, M-O-R-E-R-A, Andres. M-O-R-E-R-A, yeah.
Anyone else? N? O? P?
Molly Posackin Condo.
Posackin Condo. All right. Q? R?
Harley Rubens.
S?
Miguel Romero.
T, oh, sorry, S? Oh, Romero for R? Okay.
Yes, sir.
S-T?
Jonathan Tadeo.
Eric Tarbus.
U? V? W? X? Y? Z? Is there anyone I missed? Saying none? Up is Ariselli Gonzalez.
Hi, um, I just joined. I wasn't able to, well, I was in the call, but I was multitasking last two or seven hours, so it's kind of a long time for someone to be on. And I just want to say the question part would have been a good time for me to catch up on all of this, but I could not because I just walked into a bunch of chaos, people being interrupted and not given time to speak. Um, I don't understand why you were interrupting people like that. It's just very confusing and it's not good, um, for the public. Uh, this is, it doesn't seem like a good format. It doesn't seem like you care about what your questions are and about transparency. Uh, so yeah, I just wanted to get that out of the way. Not to mention, I didn't see any of the plans anywhere. Um, I followed some pages on social media and I could not find anything in the parking deck, so that's worrying. And yeah, so again, I just wanted to reiterate that people are busy, so they're here and they're trying to make the best out of the time that we do have to be here. So it's really frustrating that you don't take that seriously, you don't take our time into consideration, three minutes. This is, this is your job. You're paid to do this. We are not paid to do this. We're given time out of our days and we could be doing something else. Some people have to go to work in the morning, and we still make time to be here, so I don't, I, it's just, this is always a common theme with these meetings, that you don't have any respect for people's time. Um, you're just here to, uh, shut people down because you don't like what they're saying. And it's, it just, it's really, really disappointing to see that. I still have lots of, I'm not very clear on what's going on. And again, it would have been helpful to hear some of those questions that people have that I'm sure were similar to mine. But I guess this board is not interested in educating the public and being transparent. So I'm just gonna have to find that information elsewhere, even though this is, is your job to do that. Uh, so yeah, I just hope that you consider the public when you do these meetings because it doesn't seem like that's your priority. It just seems like you're trying to get through this as quickly as possible. Even when you were saying that, um, how we're gonna go through this and your explanation for the three minutes, you were speaking so fast. It's so obvious that you're just trying to get this over with. It's very disrespectful and disappointing, and I'm really sorry to be hearing this. Thank you.
Okay.
If, if I could, before you, uh, begin again, Dan, I just want to make it clear, this is not the general public portion of the meeting, this is the public comment portion on the application.
So this is my, so this is not a general comment?
If we can keep it to that, that would be, uh, that's what we're doing right now.
So I want to clarify, that was, I don't think that was a general comment. I do have something to say in the general comment. This is a comment specifically to what I just witnessed, um, when the people were asking the questions. I think that's very specific to that. Um, no, I definitely have more things to say in the public comments. And, um, even just that, even this person that just spoke right now saying that what I'm saying is not relevant, it's, it's a way of, it shows how much you guys don't want us to talk. You just want to get this over with.
Thank you. Um, I, Ms. Chair, if I can, there is, uh, there was actually a, um, there's actually one written comment that we received, and I should read it into the record. It is, uh, required by, uh, by the new regulations, so I apologize for forgetting it. It's from Ms. Laura Mers. Uh, my name is Laura Mers, and I am a homeowner and taxpayer in Hyrum Square, New Brunswick. Basically, yes.
Sorry to interrupt. This Mers has signed up to speak. She's here.
Yes, but she also submitted a, uh...
Public portion, let me speak first, then we can go to the written portion.
All right. Mr. Fournier?
Yes, um, hello. To begin with, I must step forward on objections to, uh, the length of time that we are being given tonight since the council did not give it to me last month when, um, the meeting was set out till 2:00 a.m. Um, concerning, I can, you know, with this project, what is that sound? Hello? What is that sound? Okay.
Please continue.
Okay. Um, I find a concerning lack of, uh, details, uh, with this plan, um, that it seems to be, uh, continually the case with, um, the overall project. Um, the traffic concerns are well concerning. Um, I fear the repercussions that such a hardy redevelopment would, uh, bring to, uh, this neighborhood and the town as a whole. Um, the low projected, um, uh, estimates of traffic increases, but with the parameters that such, that the data was gathered under as such, um, it, it seems that it failed to take into account the fact that this will, um, this project will radically alter the entire neighborhood, and there will be, um, increased, uh, modes and sources of traffic. Um, I, I just find it inconceivable that, um, this project is, uh, continuing as such, and it is apparent to me that more care needs to be taken to, uh, into consideration with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, um, is Chapman?
Okay, um, my first... Okay, um, my first comment, it seems like we're going to have to piece together two traffic studies, one for the pavilion, one for the parking deck, in order to get an actual study of the traffic impact here, and the board has to know that that's kind of ridiculous. My second comment, at a time when the city under Mayor Cahill's government energy aggregation program is moving toward renewable energy to lower the city's carbon footprint, the energy generation plant for this project that you're asked to approve seems to lock the hospital into fossil fuels forever. So this project locates a producing spewing fossil fuel generating station in the middle of a low-income residential neighborhood. And I wouldn't be surprised if, uh, the Sierra Club or other environmental justice organizations, uh, take an interest in this. And this issue will come up again, of course, when the board reviews the plans for the parking deck. So you take that into consideration as well, thank you.
Thank you, uh, next up is Elizabeth Sicconi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I'd like the board to consider several points in regard to this application as a whole, firstly, that it's not as full as many people have pointed out, that in fact, they are approving a portion of an entirety without the parking deck and the power generation plant. Secondly, the environmental impact statement did not include a Section 106 review under the National, uh, Infiltration Act, uh, because it is required when federal funds are being applied, uh, as in this case where there are grant funds being for the construction of the cancer pavilion. In addition, I think the board should consider that the design of the building is completely out of character with the neighborhood, as I pointed out to the architect in the last, uh, meeting, that in fact, there are no other buildings in, anywhere in New Brunswick that are made of vericata tile, and certainly not in that ne, neighborhood that has vernacular buildings from Italianate and art and craft style. Um, and in addition, I, I would just say that the attitude of cutting comments short in this case, but sending the meeting until 2:00 AM in the last case, when many people couldn't attend, is actually really unfair. Furthermore, I find that the lawyer for the board is constantly supporting the applicant when in fact, they should be supporting the citizens of the city of New Brunswick, as well as the board should be supporting the citizens of the city. In this case, the citizens have overwhelmingly said that this is inappropriate, so with all of those considerations combined, I hope that the board would consider rejecting this, or at least at a minimum, simply granting preliminary approval, uh, while we await here how they're going to justify putting a fossil fuel plant in a low-income neighborhood. Thank you.
Uh, next up is Cruz.
Yes, um, okay, so, uh, I would like to say that I do not agree with an extension being built at Rockwood Johnson of a cancer pavilion, along with an accompanying parking garage. I do strongly disagree with the location and the fact that this would displace about 750 children, most of whom are of his, of Hispanic descent. I think it is highly unethical to displace these children to prioritize an expensive expansion to a hospital at their expense, especially during times like these, I think it would be pertinent to be sensitive to these issues and how they affect low-income families and families of color. I think it's imperative that these children's well-being be prioritized, uh, from my understanding, we have no confirmation for when a replacement school will be built, from what I understand, these children are being put in a warehouse that is in a contaminated area. I also think it's extremely relevant who, uh, it was that contracted Mr. Desario's company to conduct this study. I find the lack of transparency in this regard actually disturbing, um, my comment on this application would be that the board vote no until a promise is made that a school would be fully built and ready to be actually used, um, until this is approved, in order to ensure that these children would be okay, and that is my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you, next is Data.
Uh, hey, uh, yeah, thanks, I just want to say that, uh, this hearing cannot be happening tonight, the public deserves to see the full plans before any hearing is held, including for the parking deck component, and I'm a little confused as to why these plans aren't available for the benefit of the public and the board, um, and I feel like the corruption here is out of control, the law firm representing the planning board should not be participating due to their conflict of interest. How can we expect them to be fair when the owner of the law firm has supported the development of this project from the very beginning? Um, I just don't think it's fair to the people of New Brunswick, and I feel as though we are all owed a little bit more information and a little bit more, um, uh, leeway as to how this whole thing is going about, and I, I hope the members of the board, uh, take that into consideration. Um, thanks.
Thank you, next up is Deitch.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, so first, I want to thank all of the great public members who are staying on to this very late phone call to get their voice heard, nothing more important than community activism and working together, um, and because of that, I want to remind all of the board members that who they serve is the community, not the financial stakeholders of Robert Wood Johnson and Devco, who are gentrifying this city and pushing out the lifeblood of this city, um, to move a school, a brand-new school that we, our tax money went into paying for, a brand-new school that serves mostly, um, low-income brown and black students, many of whom are immigrants, um, a school that not only serves, as I said, a large marginalized population, but serves them so well that they, it is a model school for other schools in the state. At a time where we have a crisis of defunded education, especially for black and brown youth, to get rid of that school for another building for the hospital that has ripped up most of New Brunswick, is a huge corruption of power and what you guys are supposed to stand for, where are these students going to learn? Are they going to learn in trailers, on contaminated land? Is the goal to give people more cancer, to study that cancer? I'm not quite sure what the reasoning behind that is, I'd love to assume that there's nothing untoward going on in that regard, but there's so much stuff untoward going on in every other regard, I'd have no idea where the line is drawn. Clearly, the line isn't drawn with censoring, uh, the community public as the shortening of the public speech time is ridiculous just so that you can push through a vote that the community has shown that they are highly against, um, at a time when, I think it's getting to the time period of this almost being an illegal meeting, I don't know the exact time, um, but I know the last one went until 2:00 AM. Um, and I just really want everyone to think about what we are supposed to be as a community and what it means to care about one another beyond just caring about the money that Robert Wood Johnson and Devco funnel into their own pockets. Um, I think at the very least, unless a school is built to house the 750 students of an amazing school in a, in a, amongst the campus where Rutgers itself can't even assure that most of the buildings don't
Time.
asbestos. I just would like you to consider that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Gil Martin.
Hi, um, I've lived in New Brunswick for five years, and it was the best five years of my life. Uh, three of those years were spent on Division Street, right across from the school, and getting to watch the kids walk to school from my porch was like seeing the future, you know, from what I understand, this is the top-performing school in the area, and I think that it's absolutely morally reprehensible that you would send these kids to a warehouse. I just don't understand, uh, how the whole public can be voicing their opinion against this, and you seem to not be wavering against it. I don't even know how this could be proposed, it's absolutely ridiculous, it's almost cartoonishly evil, um. Yeah, I, uh, I guess that I concede my time.
Dan? Hello?
I was unmuted, sorry, I was muted, next up is Hughes. Sorry.
Alright, thank, thank you very much, okay, um, I neglected to mention, uh, when I, when I was, uh, doing the cross-examining, when I, I served a number of years ago as the Chair of the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Task Force in Highland Park. So I know a little about these issues, and I'll confine my remarks to the traffic study, although I share the concerns about, as the last people, last speaker put it, the cartoonishly evil, uh, qualities of this project. Um, the study is, does not answer the questions that you need to be asking as a board. You need to be asking how this project will impact the safety of people who move through this space on foot and on bicycle and on scooters and on wheelchairs, and Mr. Desario did an excellent job with a very limited kind of study, but the limitations are really too severe, and you need to do another study of safety, and that study would should have some as, some, some aspects. It should examine the non-motorized users of the space, it should examine additional intersections, particularly those around the driveways uh, of the Robert Wood Johnson, uh, facility that now exists, um, the study should consider the question of thresholds. So, if this, if the, the, if this, if the intersection is safe now, that doesn't mean that one extra car per minute will maintain the safety, it may be that one extra car per minute is the straw that will break the camel's back. I believe, especially with the intersection of, um, Easton and Somerset, the camel's back is already broken, and that, and, and for the sake of safety, you definitely do not want to be moving more cars through that intersection. The final point that a safety study needs to consider are the ways to mitigate these risks, and there are ways to mitigate these risks. You could put a pedestrian phase on that intersection of Easton, on the signal of the intersection of Easton and Somerset that I just mentioned. You can have raised crosswalks, you can have traffic tables, traffic calming, bicycle lanes, there's a lot that you can do, but as the board, you cannot make any decision based on a study limited to congestion, you have to do further research on safety, combining the impacts of the, uh, parking structure as well as the new facility, and you have to bring the public into this, and you have to consult with bicyclists and pedestrians and wheelchair users and scooter users and everybody who moves through these intersections. Uh, right now, I, I don't think you're in a position to make a decision, certainly not in a position to make a positive decision, um, one that takes risk and public welfare into consideration, you really need to do a lot more work here, thank you very much.
Thank you, next up is Hunt.
Hello, uh, Mr. Dominguez, Mr. Dominguez, this is Gonzalez, I've been trying to get my name on the list.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, you're G, you can go on.
Okay, uh, well, uh, I offer three basic reasons why it would be negligent on this board's part to approve this plan. Uh, one is debate and switch, this proposal permits the use of eminent domain, even though when you initially approved the project back on March 9th by a narrow vote of three to two, this board and the public were repeatedly told by Director Dominguez and Attorney Afflil that it was a non-condemnation plan for an area in need of rehabilitation, one in which eminent domain could not legally be used. Yet somehow, this plan morphed during the summer at Middlesex County Improvement into one that authorizes eminent domain with no explanation. The garage agreement provides the same eminent domain power for the garage where four, uh, parcels are still privately owned. Were Mr. Dominguez and Mr. Ithel Plain lying to us, or did they not know what they were talking about from the start? Is this even legal? The second reason, cutting the baby in half, this proposal mocks basic principles of public planning. It divides two huge portions of the same project into separate votes, on the one hand, the cancer pavilion, and on the other hand, the new parking garage, power plant, and loading dock. As Board Member Cartica correctly notes, this doesn't pass the smell test, it prevents an overall analysis of the entire pro, uh, part, project's impact on the community, and number three is ignoring COVID. RWJ and Devco have claimed the New Brunswick Parking Authority will build and manage the new garage, even though the authority has not yet even begun a feasibility study for such a project. As I detailed in my written submission to the board, uh, the parking authority is already $400 million in debt as it makes such deep financial problems from lost revenues for the COVID pandemic, that it's in no position to launch such another garage project. So how can you approve a cancer center when no agency has said the garage is feasible? This is a textbook example of a sham public review process, despite unprecedented community opposition and despite the drastic impact of the pandemic, it tramples on the desires and needs of an immigrant and largely non-white community. You, the members of the board, should not become accomplices to this travesty, do the right thing, refuse to approve this project as currently presented to you.
Alright, next up is Hunt.
Hello, can you hear me alright?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, um, uh, let's see, I'm at, uh, 121 Lowell Lane in Monroe, and, um, I'm on to comment, uh, specifically on the traffic, um, plan here, um, I've had to many times either drop people off at the train station or pick them up, um, or travel through, and I've noticed the congestion gets worse and worse year by year, um, people come through, um, pathway would be from 95, um, and they get off at 27 and come through. People come down from the other direction, actually all the way through on 27, and come over the Raritan River and through that same location, and people come through 18 from the other direction and come through and end up at that same intersection, and it gets worse and worse and worse every year, um, and you bring in, uh, another, but, 900 cars and however many else from, you know, the associated things that will go on around there, um, due to more development, um, you know, people who work there, people who are gonna be servicing around there, um, people will be wanting to have lunch and they will need more people coming in to service in different ways, so. Uh, I don't know if you've tried it at peak hours, if you've tried crossing the street, if you've tried, you know, on foot, or if you've tried driving, but this 27 congested area here needs to be improved and not made worse with more traffic. And I've often wondered, why on earth would you pick that spot to build a cancer center? And, um, I've, I've worked in cancer, cancer centers as a nurse, and the, it just makes no sense at all to me in terms of transporting patients, you know, dropping off your family members, picking them up, all the, everything that goes into it. It just makes no sense at all to pick that location, um, and I think that you maybe are not thinking ahead or it doesn't matter to you, but, um, every year, this, this 27, you know, area gets worse and worse.
Your time, your time's up, it's time.
Okay, well, I'm saying, why not pick exit eight or exit 10, but not exit 9? Pick exit 9.
Thank you for your time.
Pick exit 8, alright, thank you.
Ming Jiao?
Hi, right, good evening, my name remains Ming Jiao, um, so, let's, so what we need to establish first, right, is that the whole basis for this project, that is everyone on this board and everyone, us, all the very lovely members of the public who have all voiced their strong and spirited opposition today and at the last 2 AM meeting. As we're all very well aware, the basis of this project relies in the displacement of 750 children predominantly from low-income black and brown families to a concrete box in the middle of a pandemic. We're currently seeing rates of, let's see, what was it? It's 100,000 now? Like 100,000 a day or so? Anyway, that's just, you know, contextualizing for where we're at in terms of the risk we're going to be putting, you know, these children at. We're seeing however COVID develops over the next year. But yes, we're displacing children into a concrete box into an industrial zone nearby dangerous waste that could potentially create and, you know, foster future health risks. That might even lead to, as a previous commentator has mentioned, that this could literally lead to like future cases of cancer that like, you know, we're having this whole project, you know, and the whole, you know, tagline for it is like, you know, we're researching cancer and trying to fight it while you're forcing all these children into like a dangerous area they're going to be schooled in where they might be developing these health issues later on. It's like a very flippant and obvious disregard for the community. Right? So the fact that the application is being heard at all is evidence that like we understand that this is completely profit-driven. This isn't being done with any care or mind for the people whose space and land is not being utilized but exploited. And we're not only facing this exploitation of our space, but we're facing the disdain and utter lack of transparency evident through the way that these plans have been split. The attitude of the board and as another previous multiple commentators have spoke, the attitude of the attorney of the board who I don't understand how we have, you know, the attorney of the board speaking to the client, whatever. None of this, um, right. None of the public has put forward has been basically considered. None of the opposition that we put forward matter and we don't understand this. The public knows this because of how like, you know, the meetings have been carried and how we've been dragged through this to the last 3 AM meeting. What we are looking at is a matter of fighting for our community in the face of disgusting predatory profit-seeking that is mixed like to make clear is taking out the most model school we have in the area for, you know, students in low-income areas. The profit that's being sought is made on top of already millions and millions. And the cost that RWJ and Devco are happy to pay is that of not only billions of our tax dollars, but the lives and well-being of local children and families. So I'll conclude just with this. To the New Brunswick community, we are all, each of us have. Evidently, our politicians, our representatives do not care about us. And they're happy to see our children displaced to concrete boxes in a pandemic so that they might make more luxury for themselves and their splendid millions. Enough is enough and re deserves so much better than this farce, whatever you want to call it.
All right, next up is Mr. Cradaville.
Thank you. I like you.
Early Cradaville, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Boy, and I think you're a sexy earl.
Okay, I think somebody else might be speaking right now, but yeah, I wanted to use as much time as possible here to, you know, outline my objections. Unfortunately, that's going to cut into my public comments if you limit me to three minutes, so I'll just say at the top, the only acceptable way that the board could pass such a proposal would be if you were to include a condition that no permits for construction or occupancy will be granted until a replacement school has opened. So would the applicant consent to that condition?
It's not appropriate for me to answer, member of the public, during public comment.
Pretty sure it's happened many, many times before this board, but I'll move on. I'd like to share my screen so I can show you the exhibits that I have put forth to the board. So I don't know if I need special permission to do that. I think I'm sharing. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll let you know, first of all, Mr. Gonzalez already testified to some of this stuff, but, you know, the parking deck application is not available. There's been a lot of changes in what the official story is behind that. And so I just submitted, for purposes of the record, these last few documents here, C10, C11, C12, C13 are all exhibits from the initial plans for the parking garage. If you want to see for yourself what was planned, they pulled back those plans and said they need to change them again. And we don't know why. We don't know when there'll be new plans. And we ultimately, you know, didn't get what we needed today to really, for the board to be able to make an informed decision. I do want to show you an exhibit here. It is the other thing Mr. Gonzalez alluded to. This is the redevelopment agreement that's been executed between the applicant and the MCIA, the Improvement Authority. And you'll see right here, it does, in violation of the board's redevelopment plan and that you all approved on March 9th, it does authorize the exercise of the power of eminent domain. And that has not been addressed. That's an illegal agreement in violation of the planning board's wishes. So that's another objection of mine, a reason this should not move forward. You should not move forward with a vote. But I also do want to get to the conflicts of interest and the real problem here. I'll point out, this is an article published on the Cancer Institute's website. And you can see it's from June 3, 2019.
That's time.
A group of people there. This is Bob Smith here, fourth from the left, the guy in the khaki pants. He is the owner of the law firm that's representing the board here. But here you see him celebrating and advocating for this development that's before the board. He should never have been able to represent this board on that particular, on this particular matter. And he should have recused himself. This this is going to be a big problem. And I think that it does explain some of the decisions that have been made, including cutting back the public's ability to speak. And finally, I do have to acknowledge my other objection to Mr. Berger's participation. Are you going to let me put this on the record or not?
Mr. Ito, he can just do that in the general public portion or, I mean, his time is up?
I think he's already put his objections on the record, but if he wants to repeat that one last objection, it won't take long. Will it, Mr. Cradaville?
No, it won't. As the board's already familiar, Mr. Berger has expressed he believes he has a conflict of interest with regard to being the mayor's representative because the mayor has a business relationship with Bob Hollis, the owner of Wick Properties, the owner of the warehouse school where the students would be sent if they lose their school. So I would insist that, in just the same way as Bob Smith attending that event on June 3 should prevent your participation, Mr. Counsel, in this matter. The mayor's participation and constant advocacy and statements in support of this exact development should disqualify his representative from participating as well. Mr. Berger should not vote on that.
Next up is Jessica Cradaville.
Thank you, yes. I'd like to start by saying that I agree wholeheartedly with most of the other commenters about the conflict of interest by certain members of this board. And that the idea of displacing 750 students from a well-performing school to a hole-in-the-ground New Jersey Avenue is despicable. The idea that the Cancer Research Center must be in this spot makes no sense whatsoever. There is plenty of real estate elsewhere in the city and in the county if there was such a desire to have the Cancer Research Center being located in the heart of Middlesex County. The objections that people have made about the school continuing to be there, like the children are going to get hit by an ambulance and that it would be better to have this school down Jersey Avenue make no sense whatsoever. And the idea of constructing a huge 11-story building, parking deck, and power station in the middle of the city without proper environmental or traffic concerns considerations to pedestrians, to to the bus traffic and to cyclists. It makes no sense whatsoever. And I think that the fact that people are plowing through this in the middle of the night, people are waking up to try to participate and do their civic responsibility by participating in the meeting when corrupt actors are trying to continue the meetings into the dawn. It's really upsetting to see that in this time when people are so engaged and trying to make a difference in their community, that it's just being pulled away from them by this select few who have this agenda to build something for their own benefit and not for the community. It's really deeply upsetting. And I encourage everyone to vote against this measure. It's not for the public interest. And it's really very deeply upsetting that people are considering to to take the school away from the children in a minority and impoverished neighborhood to just build themselves a way to line their pockets and build a fancy new building. I appreciate everyone's time and I hope you all have a good evening.
Okay, next, next up is Mr. Koulas.
Yes, thank you. Traffic, traffic, traffic safety is the public's safety. New Brunswick, Highland Park, the South area, you know, Edison, the South area. Edison, South area. It's been pretty much my whole life and I've been able to observe the, you know, the development of these severe traffic issues. You know, I believe when a lot of people were trying to, you know, when we were cross-examining, we were trying to explain our questions as we go because this is much more far-reaching than a very small circumference working at from the point of view of just blocks beyond to townships and municipalities beyond, which is why I kind of asked multiple times, have we looked into, you know, has anyone addressed with Highland Park, East Brunswick, Franklin, Somerset, Biscataway? All these towns, city governments should have, be able to have some kind of say. But, you know, there is definitely a lot of questions here, but I think the problem is this traffic study does not necessarily look at cause and effect. It's more basing itself on trial and error. And the problem is, once you get started with this project and you go too far, there's going to be no turning around and you're going to have to deal with the crisis problems that you have, the crisis traffic problems that will become, you know, in the moment, and you're not going to have any alternative plans to work around it. You know, I mean, we really have to look at the serious fact that you might have an ambulance, you will have an ambulance with paramedics behind it, trying to, you know, honk its way and, you know, progress its sirens so that people can get out of the way so that it can get to the ER. But if people can't get it, get out of the way because there's more traffic, how do you solve that solution? It is, there really is no solution. That is a trial and error thing that's going to come along, that's going to be very risky. We talk about public transportation. And what makes public transportation positive is when things are running on time. If you, you have the taxis, you have the Rutgers buses, you have the Coach USA bus, you have the Middlesex County bus routes, you have New Jersey Transit trains, all coming into this one little center area, which is what makes it the hub. And yes, that's very positive to New Brunswick. But if you slow all that down with more traffic, will we hear the arguments across the state of, you know, people arguing that New Jersey Transit is too slow? So why are we inviting that problem now? You know, it's, this is just not, you know, this is not the right path. This is not the right course. Yes?
Time?
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Koulas. Next speaker is Ms. McGathney. Ms. McGathney?
Hi. All right, I had a whole thing written out, but I, I'm tired. I'm, I'm tired of fighting this fight and maybe it's naive, but I feel like it shouldn't, it shouldn't be up to us to have to fight for our right to have a school in our own neighborhood. I first want to say that this city has been my home for 15 years and I love it here. And sorry, I'm getting a little emotional, but it just, it feels like a David and Goliath fight, except Goliath has $750 million and the planning board slingshot. And all David has is righteousness and feeling like we should be able to have a say in our own community. It's, it's just, it's sad to me that everybody who lives in this neighborhood and everybody who lives and works here and loves this area is telling you what we want and more importantly, that we don't want this. And I feel like we're being waved away like a nuisance. And it just, it makes me sad that that's the city that is my home. These, you people who are supposed to have our best interests at heart, you're supposed to be fighting for us and I, I hope you do. I really hope that you consider the plans that we're seeing and that you're voting on right now and that you see. It's not just careless to approve what we're looking at now. It's reckless. It's, it's dangerous for us. This is the first domino. This is the first domino that's going to fall before my home is next. I don't own my home. I'm a tenant. Eminent domain doesn't protect me in any way. Nothing does. This is just my home and that's all I have. So I just hope that you vote thinking about the people who live here and learn here and then work here and serve this community. And just think about what we offer, even if it doesn't mean a couple commas in our net worth. And I thank you for your time and I, I just hope you continue to serve us as we want you to.
Thank you, Ms. McGathney. Last name, Mers?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I'd like to start out by saying that I am a cancer survivor. I do understand and fully support New Brunswick having a cancer treatment center here in town. I think the thought and the effort that has gone into the planning of that cancer center shows a clear concern for the well-being of the patients. What I have not seen is a clear concern for the children who are being displaced by this cancer center. Children who are from families whose finances are such that they receive free and reduced-priced lunches, whose families are unlikely to be able to afford treatments in the medical facility should they be afflicted with cancer. Children who are primarily from families of color, that is, black and brown families. And I think that the majority of the people who would receive treatment at this facility that is proposed, that has been touted for its natural light, which is good for the mind and body, the terraced roof with its greenery, the individualized care. Those patients are going to end up being white, wealthy patients. And when we have touted the natural light and the roof terrace of this facility, I noticed the city has not authorized a new school building with such amenities for the children that you are proposing to displace. The children who attend Lincoln Annex School will be sent to a converted warehouse, which does not appear to have the essential natural light so touted by the architectural firm that designed the cancer center. It doesn't appear to have green space where the children can run around and play during recess. In fact, we don't even have a new building authorized at all for these kids, nor do we have a timeline for when such a school might be completed. So let's call this what it really is. This is white supremacy at its most repugnant. We are going to displace black and brown children to a warehouse with no plan for a new school building. And you can argue all you want that it wasn't your decision to sell the school, but you are part of this decision and you are part of the city's attempt to break that decision up into pieces so small that no one has to take responsibility. And that does not alleviate you of your complicity and it does not excuse the racism inherent in every step of this process. So by all means, build a cancer center, but build a new school first. This board should not approve this cancer center until it has approved a new school building and that building is complete. It has to have the same amenities for these children that are so necessary for the health and well-being of these cancer patients. So natural light, green spaces, environmental testing to make sure there is no pollution on the site, solar panels on the roofs, proper facilities to enhance their learning environment. Anything less than that is a racist stain on this city and you will be responsible for perpetuating a white supremacist society. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Mione.
The public deserves to see the full plans before any meeting is held for the parking deck component. Splitting this up like Mr. Gonzalez said is just absolutely absurd, and it feels like these are, this type of behavior, this type of move is benefiting the board rather than the public, and this is what it's all about, helping the public at the end of the day. And it's unbelievable to have Bob Smith over here, who is clearly conflict of interest, objecting to the public and also cutting, cutting our time from five minutes to three minutes, saying that that is, you know, properly allotted because there's so many callers. Well, maybe you should take it as a sign, there's so many callers, because so many people are interested, and you should listen to those people. Clearly, the people living in this neighborhood are going to be very personally affected. It's absolutely absurd. Clearly, the kids in one of the highest-performing schools in the district, 750 children in a future-ready school with solar panels, and you're going to put a power plant and, power plant? I mean, it's just absurd. It's absolutely absurd. And I feel like anyone who has not voted on this yet as part of the board, please, please, please do not vote yes to it. Need to be way, have way more thorough examination. Environmental health study needs to be done, no question about it. No one's saying that cancer ring shouldn't be, it shouldn't happen or shouldn't help cancer patients. We're simply saying that it needs to be done properly and not take down a school that is clearly performing and doing a job, and then putting these kids in a warehouse and giving them no timetable, no plan, and to get a new school. And we know that there's a lot of money supposedly going into that new school, but where's the plan? It's absolutely ridiculous. It just, it makes no sense to anyone I've explained this issue to, because no one makes, no one can comprehend why this is happening. It makes zero sense, and clearly, that's evident because so many people are calling in. So many people care about this. This isn't getting swept under the rug like it clearly was meant to be. People care about the school, people care about the kids, which, I mean, obviously, you're public officials, you should as well. You took an oath to obviously protect the community. I yield my time.
Dan, I just want, Dan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just want to, I just want to speak to the board for a second. We have six more people to hear from for public comment. It's 11:20, and after those six people, we can move for a motion, and I want to know if there's any objection to continuing with that process proceeding. Evil. Hearing none, Dan, so please continue.
Next up is Danielle Moore.
Wow, I have to say, you really are an evil person, Mr. Saporloveling. You really are, where you hate to hear the truth is something, and it's a shame. And like I said, Mr. Dominguez, if I pronounce your name correctly, if you was an honest person, you need to speak up to the board and tell them, wow, this traffic situation is not going to work due to where Landon Lane Bridge is to be torn down and redone. Eastern Avenue and Front Street is to be redone soon, and the same thing for Sedan and Front Street, where you should speak up and tell them due to where you were part of the traffic meeting on this, and it's not good for so much traffic with all the projects that are going to be changing. And for you, Mr. Saporloveling, wow, did you tell the planning board due to where what the city council said? Wow, if this land, if this land is contaminated, which we know it is contaminated, that they will not even be able to build a school, and they will be out there permanently at 40 Van Dyke Avenue until they find another location for a school to be built. Did you tell your planning board members that? It's on video where it came at a President Anderson meeting, not at the meeting, where that's contaminated, which is not a location for a school, because Robert Wood Johnson and the police department are picking up three times a day overdoses from smoking space, K2, everything. And like I said, all of you ought to be ashamed of yourselves if you really attempt to do this, because like I said, watch the video with President Anderson, what he said, if the land is contaminated, due to where we already know it's contaminated, due to where that's why they didn't build the low-income housing five years ago, that the kids will be stuck at 40 Van Dyke Avenue until a further location will be for another school. So there's no guarantee that that lot will even be, which is not a good spot for a school regardless. And like I said, wow, you hate to hear the truth, Mr. Saporloveling. You're always quiet, nice, and city council, innocent, but wow, you're a total different person here, where you just hate to hear the truth. And it's very shameful, but like I said, oh, it will come back to you, because like I said, you're evil. You don't care about anyone else's safety at all. And like I said, due to where with all the traffic things that are going on, they changed the roads with the truck route, Somerset Street is the main street, due to where how it cannot go on to George Street with the railroad tracks, can't go on to Joyce Comer, can't go under Handy, can't go on to Sedan. Also, that's the main area where a lot of trucks come, and you're going to create a bad situation with that.
Time.
Like, if you're not a person who lives here, you don't know. But like I said...
Next up is Marrera.
Evil.
Marrera?
May I please be put on the list? The last name is Hunt, H-U-N-T.
You spoke already, Ms. Hunt.
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought this was a different period of...
No. Okay.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, yeah, I'm, Mr. Marrera here. Hi, so I'm here to speak as an employee of Rutgers with regard to the attempts of Robert Wood Johnson, Devco, and my employer Rutgers, and others to displace the students of Lincoln Annex for the construction of this cancer center. So the approval of construction of this parking garage and all the other things related to this, to the cancer pavilion and whatnot, directly affects the health of the community it's situated in, and the community can factor into this approval process.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Hello?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify one point, and Mr. Dominguez, if you can add the time back. Did I hear the individual saying that he was speaking on behalf of Rutgers University?
Oh, no, 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 not at all. No, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but I do happen to be an employee of Rutgers, and I just want to express that...
My apologies.
There are people who work for Rutgers who do not like what their employer is doing. And if this gets me in trouble with Rutgers, well, I think that just adds more fire to the flame. Anyway, so this decision to displace these students, it's being done in a misleading way that's ultimately against the principles of democracy, and it's a textbook case of gentrification. It's fine to want to build a new cancer center and consider all options, but not what it means excluding from the decision-making process and misleading the very community it will most directly affect. And no, holding comment sessions is not enough involvement of the community in decision-making. And anyway, Mayor Cahill himself said in the City of New Brunswick website that the health and wellness, the health, wellness, and pulse of our city comes from the foundation of a healthy and vibrant community. Going through with the destruction of Lincoln Annex and building this complex is antithetical to this. The sure-as-heck does not promote the foundation of a healthy and vibrant community. It does the opposite. It atomizes, disrupts, and ultimately harms this community, following a trend of displacement and gentrification mile by mile, block by block, all too common in this country and this city. And I haven't even gotten to the fact that the students, the children displaced to this project will be expected to go to a school that will be built, if ever at all, on a toxic industrial brown site, the decontamination of which hasn't even been started. What are you all doing? Why? Why are you being complicit in something that is ultimately violent to the community and children of that community, no less? Please don't go forward with this, if not for the health of the children and dignity of the community, then at least for the fact that this erodes the foundation of our democracy. If you think this project is wrong but are going to sign off on this anyway, console yourself by telling yourself your hands are tied, that this is stuff you can't consider, and you're just doing your job, okay? At least let those higher up the chain know that you too think this is wrong, along with the many students and parents and community members. In other words, join in with our protest. Additionally, and this part might be hard to hear, have you read the news? Have you seen the protests around the country, the talk of systemic inequality and systemic racism? This kind of project, this kind of non-democratic process, this is part of, and it's very much what leads to this systemic inequality and racism that is being protested against.
Time.
And you are actively participating in it, whether you like it or not, whether you think so or not.
Your time is up, sir. Who's next, Dan?
Next up is Pasacantando.
Yeah, hi there. Good job on the last name, a lot of people get that wrong, but I think it's pretty clear what the public wants and what the community wants, and the vote, I just want the board to think about what their job is. In the community facilities plan element in the New Brunswick City Master Plan, it says that the New Brunswick school system is designated as a special needs district, and as a planning board, I would think that it's your job to make sure that the master plan and the planning section of the master plan is followed. And I personally don't see how moving the students to a temporary school without a designated time for the, for the more permanent school to be built, I don't see how that's appreciating the special needs that the city, the city itself acknowledges. And then another thing that I think the planning board might be forgetting, if they were to vote yes on this, is in the transitioning to a low-carbon economy plan, which is another plan that the city has stated out, and again, in the planning section, when it says land use planning should support the transition to a low-carbon economy, and it goes on, it says that the government will encourage community and land use planning that incorporates energy efficiency, energy conservation, sequestration, emissions, so on and so forth, to encourage communities to have safe, safe alternative forms of transportation, environmental growth. And again, I don't know about, about you all, but I think that voting yes on replacing a school with, with solar panels and replacing it with a power plant, I don't see how that's abiding by anything that the government has set out. I don't think that it's abiding by anything that the public members have said that they want, so I don't see what else would be going into this decision, other than, I don't know, a desire for profit. So I hope that the planning board members, if a vote is taken, will think about their duty to the city, not just from the comments that we've made tonight, but also from the planning board's own purported goals and values. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Rubens.
Hello. I just hope that the committee and the experts understand that we're not asking quote-unquote "off-topic" questions or making the statements we're making to frustrate you or even to obscure this process. I mean, it's not good enough to tell us that safety doesn't factor into a traffic study when this is our lives, that doesn't matter, we don't care. It's not good enough to say that. It's not good enough to say that this is...
It's on a pay.
Because we have a...
Just taking...
...very relevant questions. We understand that all of these things are connected. We understand that the pavilion is connected to the garage. We're not stupid, and we know you're not stupid either. I don't think it's a doubt, and it's structured in a way that limits the public's ability to participate, which has very real implications for our community and our lives. I honestly can't tell you that you genuinely don't have the answers to questions or the teachings. I mean, if you genuinely don't have the answers to my asking for, that's some pretty gross implications. They're not even not giving it to us. That is incredibly, incredibly unethical. Just the ins and outs of this, the splitting of this proposal into a million tiny parts. It's not good enough to tell you that the way things... If that's the case, the way things work is disgustingly, disgustingly unethical. I sincerely hope you reconsider not just this particular project, but the way that this is structured and the way it prevents us saying what's happening in our own communities to our own families and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Romero.
Yes, hi. I'd just like to commend all the people that have been on the call. These are people that clearly care about doing the right thing, and obviously, there's a lot of people that are spending a lot of their free time. You know, this is not our job to be able to, to think of these things, but, you know, from what we've been seeing, it's really a lot of lack of planning on a lot of other people. When this plan came out, at first it was said, you know, there's not going to be any taxpayer money that's going to be involved, the next thing you know, there's a lot, you know, millions of dollars of our taxpayer money that's going to go into it, and now there's going to be a power plant built, now there's going to be a parking deck built. So it just keeps adding on. So somebody's definitely not doing their job when it comes to planning, and somebody's not doing their job, or maybe they're doing their job too well when it comes to hiding things from the public, because this has been an utterly undemocratic process that has been going on, which is really on par with, with Devco. I mean, I think Devco is supposed to be a public, a public planning firm, and if you look at the projects they've done over the years, it does not benefit the people in New Brunswick, it benefits, you know, whether it's like Robert Wood Johnson, or whether it's Johnson &amp; Johnson, or Rutgers, or things like that, they're not really thinking about, you know, making, for example, bike lanes in the areas where the residents live, they're making in the, you know, in the cost area, so, you know, they're spending public money or, you know, just basically shifting, you know, public planning towards, you know, private profit, and it's, it's basically true. I mean, I can't speak eloquently as all the other speakers have been saying all the, you know, plans, and, you know, you guys have all heard, you know, months of, you know, the, you know, the plans to build, you know, the school in a toxic place and just, you know, utterly immoral decision-making. And I think, you know, I think, you know, the group's going to continue fighting until, you know, until we get this, this right, like, this can't, this can't be the, the plan that the board decides to, you know, to forward. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really a shame. It's really a shame that it has to come through this, and I have a question. So are the board members elected into, into the planning board, or are they selected? Can somebody answer that?
They are not elected.
They're not elected. So who determines who gets on the board? Is that the city council?
No, it is not.
Would you be able to tell me who that is?
Madam Chair, this is the opportunity for the public to comment. It's not a question and answer period.
Do you have any other comments, sir?
The time has expired.
Your time has expired. Who's next, Dan?
Yes, next up is Tadeo. Tadeo, I apologize for name misspelling, mispronunciation.
That's fine. Are you all listening? I can't tell because a number of times I've seen especially elected officials, especially you, Bob, not actually looking at the screen while the rest of us are all taking our time to watch you very intently. I have seen a number of people that are supposed to be listening to the constituency quite distracted, and a number of times we have brought up very civilly in this discourse, the conflict of interest, the contaminated site for the supposed school that, you know, these children will allegedly be bused to, once this school that is future-ready is to be turned into something that a number of people within your constituency are telling you that they do not wish to see built. And I hope that none of you have ever had to deal with the reckless grieving of a parent that has lost their child to cancer, because your constituency is watching you right now. Your constituency will continue to watch you, and I really hope that if there is any shred of humanity left in any of you, that you will choose the civil decision, you will choose the humane decision to not go ahead with this parking deck, to not go ahead with these plans to build, because we're telling you right now that we don't want this. We're telling you right now, all of these horrible things that involve the lives of children that can be averted right now. Are you not wealthy enough right now? Is it really worth the added money lying to the pocket? Is it? Ask yourself that right now. Ask yourself if you want to be asking these questions to a grieving parent that has lost their child to a completely avertible situation that you chose poorly, that you chose more wealth, instead of declining this offer, instead of ending... of a parent that has lost their child to cancer, because your constituency is watching you right now. Your constituency will continue to watch you. And I really hope that if there is any shred of humanity left in any of you, that you will choose the civil decision, you will choose the humane decision, to not go ahead with this parking deck, to not go ahead with these plans to build. Because we're telling you right now that we don't want this. We're telling you right now, all of these horrible things that involve the lives of children that can be averted right now. Are you not wealthy enough right now? Is it really worth the added money lying to the pocket? Is it? Ask yourself that right now. Ask yourself if you want to be asking these questions to a grieving parent that has lost their child to a completely avertible situation that you chose poorly, that you chose more wealth, instead of declining this offer, instead of ending this right here and right now. Low-income people work on your cars, they make your food, they fix what's wrong in your house, they clean your house. I hope none of you live in New Jersey, and I hope none of you actually have services from people that live in these communities that are going to be affected by this. Think about it. You have an opportunity to stop this now. That's it. Think about it.
Next up is Herb Tarbus. Mr. Tarbus? Press star six to unmute yourself, Mr. Tarbus, if you're muted.
Okay. It wasn't working. Now it's unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. I just want to talk about what's reasonable and what's unreasonable. And there's a lot of things about this that are unreasonable. As others have said, it's unreasonable for Mr. Ital to be involved in this process, given the position of Senator Smith. It's unreasonable for Mr. Berger to continue in this process, given he's expressed an opinion that he has a conflict of interest. It's unreasonable. And it's also unreasonable to accept the testimony of the traffic engineer today. Part of the traffic engineer's testimony was anchored by the idea that there would not be a sort of residual effect throughout the city. But the math showed that he was not being honest about the one car permitted at intersections, as there's clearly at least 90 cars on Eastern Avenue permitted additional. So I think that the whole testimony needs to be thrown out. It's not reasonable that this traffic study gives you a good picture of what's going on when the corner of Little Albany and Eastern was not included and the corner of Albany and Eastern was not included. Those are two of the most harrowing places to cross the street in the whole city of New Brunswick. And additionally, as some other persons said, it's not reasonable to think that the intersection at Lewis &amp; Sitem, Sedam is not impacted by this project. They all are impacted, and they're all impacted adversely, right? They're all impacted. What would be reasonable would be for this board to put a condition on the approval of this to replace the school. That would be a reasonable thing to do. In fact, you have Mr. Drucker, a very, obviously a very compassionate and passionate and talented architect. He could probably build a school into this project if you asked him to, right? He could probably do it. He probably would enjoy doing it. There's a lot of space being used for the parking garage in this project. I urge you all to put a condition on this approval that the school be replaced. The school be replaced in concert with the construction of this facility. I urge you all to do that. And what else is unreasonable? It's unreasonable to think that this project is not racially motivated. We have not heard a single syllable of empathy from any public official about the impact on this low-income community. Not a single syllable has been uttered by anyone to show any empathy for the people of color that are being adversely affected. It's not reasonable that this is not racially motivated. It is totally reasonable to accept and believe that this entire project is racially motivated. It's just racial segregation, I'm sorry, racial gentification. And there's really no reason to go forward with it. I urge you, Mr. Berger in particular, to abstain from voting on this project. Thank you very much.
All right, that is, Ms. Chair, that's the last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Mr. Ital, did you have direction that you wanted to give to the board?
Excuse me, you skipped S. Stork? Hello?
Is she on the list?
Yeah, she's on the list.
Mr. Ital?
Is Miss Stork on the list?
She's not on the list.
Yes, I was.
I didn't have her on.
I didn't get you on my list.
You have three minutes.
All right. You're on, Miss Stork.
Okay, so, yes, hi. I wanted to talk about how this project is going to affect our quality of life. I mean, for myself, my children are no longer school age, although I must say it was a determining factor when I bought my house in this area, that there were neighborhood schools. I guess New Brunswick is making the neighborhood school concept a thing of the past. So for me, at this point, it's mainly going to be the traffic. The traffic is already horrendous to go in any direction from here, especially the afternoon rush. You sit to go up Eastern Avenue, which would be when people would be leaving, even though it's not, what was it, 10% of 300? What, 30 more people? You can't even believe how long you sit through all those lights to go up Eastern Avenue and then, or even to get onto Eastern Avenue, to come across town at that time, come in the other direction, down to Cortlandt Street, and then to come across and then crossing Somerset, crossing Hamilton first, and then Somerset. You sit through those lights multiple times at each of those intersections. And then down to French, also. So, and this is the area, they aren't the exact intersections that were in the study, but the people that passed through those intersections later or earlier, depending on whether they're coming or going, would have to pass through these intersections first. And these intersections are full. They are past full. You know, I have to make decisions about where I'm going, especially when Ruckus is in session, just not do certain things, even going the other way, trying to get on that bridge over to Highland Park. You just sit. Even the access roads onto Route 18. It's not just that one light that slows up the traffic, because actually, the traffic is backed up into New Brunswick on the access roads, sitting. So, yeah, I'm fortunate enough to be retired now. I just don't go any of those places at any of those times. But I mean, it's getting restrictive. Honestly, it's getting worse and worse. And this can't possibly help that situation. So, yeah, that's my little quality of life. But the quality of life of the students is near and dear to me also. Having taught in these neighborhood schools for over 30 years, and I talked to the students and the families when they were coming out of Lincoln Annex, when they had to go get their things, none of them thought this was a good idea.
That's time. Ms. Chair?
Madam Chair, I'll be the board attorney.
Mr. Ital, I'm sorry. I was on mute. Can you hear me now?
I can.
You can?
I can.
Okay. I just want to say that that concludes the public comment portion. And now, we're going to go to our board attorney for some direction for the board members.
Thank you. Madam Chair, at the conclusion of the applicant's case and after the members of the public have had an opportunity to comment on the application, we have the board to consider the application to make its decision. At this point, the applicant has put on its testimony. Interested members of the public have had an opportunity to cross-examine applicant's witnesses' comment on the application. Under the Emergency Remote Meeting Protocol for Local Public Bodies, members of the public who submitted written statements may have those statements written into the record subject to time limitations in place for all public comments. Documents received by the planning board from Ms. Laura Mers, Mr. Juan Gonzalez, and Mr. Charles Cradaville. However, those documents were not read into the record as all three, Mr. Gonzalez, Ms. Mers, and Mr. Cradaville exercised their maximum permitted time for comment through live comment. All documents, nonetheless, are available for the board to review and to consider. At this point, the members of the board are advised that they are permitted to discuss and consider the merits of this application in full. Prior to this point, the members of the board were limited to listening to the testimony of the numerous witnesses and the comments of the public. Board members are permitted to only ask questions of the applicant up until the close of testimony and the closing of the public comment period. Now that the board has closed the public comment period, no additional testimony is being presented. Board members are permitted to discuss the evidence and testimony presented with each other. If the board members believe that additional information is needed or if clarification of testimony presented is needed, the board may, upon motion, reopen the hearing and take additional testimony, which would then be subject to additional public comment. During deliberations, the board members may ask any questions or ask for information or clarification from its professional staff only. It may not ask for information or clarification of testimony from the applicant's witnesses or from members of the public without first moving to reopen the hearing. The board may also ask questions of the applicant's attorney for clarification of the applicant's position, which is not to be considered as testimony. For example, if a member of the board would like to ask a procedural question or has a question regarding a professional's judgment on a technical issue, such as an engineering question or a planning question or a question of law or of the city's ordinances or of whether the applicant is amenable to a condition of approval, the board may ask that question or questions now. However, no additional testimony from the applicant or public can be entertained at this time unless a motion to reopen a hearing is made. In considering the application, members of the board are advised that each case must be decided strictly on the basis of the facts adduced at the hearing, viewed in the light of the statutory and ordinance requirements. This board is a quasi-judicial board whose function is to apply the facts adduced at the hearing to the legal requirements of the applicable statutes and ordinances and to decide whether any relief has been requested by the applicant, which is referred to as a variance under the municipal land use law, and whether that relief, if requested, can be legally granted or not. In this specific application, the applicant is not seeking any variance relief from this board. That is, it is not seeking any permission to depart from the requirements of the zoning or site plan ordinance or from the health care and research pavilion redevelopment plan. The number of witnesses or volume of documents and exhibits presented by the applicant is not a factor that this board may consider in its deliberation, except to the extent that the board may determine that necessary testimony to legally support the application was omitted by the lack of submissions or witnesses. Similarly, the board may consider the content of the public comments, but should refrain from attributing weight based solely on the number of people who commented. This board should be advised that, as provided for in the municipal land use law, if an applicant seeks variance relief from this board, what this means is that the applicant is seeking permission from this board to depart from the literal requirements of the zoning or site plan ordinance, or in this case, also the redevelopment ordinance. The facts adduced at the hearing, all testimony and all evidence on which the board makes its decision, must be part of the record, and the board's decision must include findings of fact from the record on which it has made its decision and conclusions on the points of law raised. The board's decision must be made in public at a public meeting, and the board votes on the making of its decision and the adoption of the resolution must be taken in public at a public meeting. What is before the board tonight for discussion and consideration is whether to approve applicant's major site plan application in light of the testimony that applicant has placed on the record and its site plan application, which conforms with the requirements of the redevelopment plan and the site plan and zoning ordinance, and in light of the reports of the board's professionals. In reviewing a site plan application that does not include variances, planning board is limited to determine whether the plan meets the requirements of the zoning and site plan ordinances or, as the case may be, the applicable redevelopment plan. If those requirements are met, then the board must approve the application, subject to reasonable conditions, however. The process does not permit the board member to vote to deny a conforming application in order to prohibit a permitted use. A board member cannot vote to deny approval of a site plan application merely because he or she believes that the permitted use proposed by the applicant is not as desirable as another use or a previous use. Further, this board does not have the authority to deny approval of the site plan application on the basis of traffic generation if the use proposed on the site is permitted. Therefore, the impact the application may have on off-site at intersections in the vicinity of the project may not be the basis to deny the application. Again, in reviewing a site plan application, this board is limited by law to determining whether the plan conforms with the municipality's zoning and site plan ordinances or its redevelopment plan. It cannot use its quasi-judicial power to prohibit a permitted use. This board must only make its determination of whether to approve or deny the site plan application if it meets the zoning and site plan ordinances and the redevelopment plan. If the application does not meet the zoning and site plan ordinances or the redevelopment plan, this board may consider whether the applicant has met its statutory burden of the municipal land use law to warrant approval to deviate from the zoning or site plan ordinances or the redevelopment plan by applying for a variance. For example, if the site plan application requires a variance from a condition or requirement to the city's zoning ordinance, the board is not required to approve the application. The applicant must produce evidence on the record indicating, for example, an undue hardship or unique circumstances affecting the land or special reasons for the variance, depending on the nature of the relief sought. And the applicant must always show that the relief can be granted without detriment to the public welfare and without impairing the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Denial of a site plan that conforms with the requirements of a site plan and zoning ordinance or redevelopment plan is considered a drastic action that is permissible only if there is authorization in the statute for denial. For example, if there was no adequate water supply for a particular tract of land proposing a development for human habitation, a site plan denial is permissible on that basis. Another situation where denial would be permissible would be if the site plan impinges upon public safety. For example, if the proposed development does not have any access roads and thus makes it impossible for a fire department to reach the proposed building that's proposed on the site. The board may also deny a site plan application if the applicant, I'm sorry, if the application lacks the specificity required by the ordinance or the applicant fails or refuses to provide information pertinent to development. For example, if the applicant fails to provide a stormwater management plan. These reasons for denial are not an exhaustive list, but rather illustrative of reasons for denial that have been previously upheld by reviewing courts. To summarize, you are asked to deliberate and discuss the application before you tonight, where the applicant is seeking site plan approval to construct a structure that it proposes to use as a research and treatment facility. After you discuss and deliberate the specifics of the application, you have several options. In no particular order, the first option is to vote to deny the application based on a specific and articulated determination that denial is permitted under the law and warranted under the facts. If you vote to deny the application, your reasons for denial must be based on a finding that the application does not conform with the redevelopment plan or the applicable provisions of the site plan or subdivision ordinances. The second option you have is to vote to grant only a preliminary site plan approval. The board should be advised that a preliminary approval does not permit the applicant to proceed with development of the site. An applicant cannot develop a site unless it receives preliminary and final site plan approval. The city ordinance allows both preliminary and final site plan approval at one time. This board, however, is empowered to grant preliminary site plan approval only, which would require the applicant to make a separate application for final site plan approval and to appear again before this board and present that application for final approval. The third option is to vote to grant the application for preliminary and final site plan approval as requested by the applicant, which may be done with or without imposition of reasonable and permitted conditions. If you vote to approve the application, you may do so with conditions, but those conditions must be derived from provisions in the site plan or zoning ordinance or the redevelopment plan. For example, the board can impose a condition requiring that approval for a parking garage with the required amount of parking spaces be obtained and that the garage be constructed prior to the opening of the Cancer Pavilion. Because the garage is to be considered by the board separately, this is a condition that the applicant's attorney has indicated is reasonable and that the applicant would accept. Based on these instructions, do any members of the board have any questions for me?
I do not.
Madam Chair, if there are no other questions, I would ask that the conditions... I would ask that the conditions recommended by the city's professional staff be read into the record and considered by the board as well.
Do any board members have any questions for the professionals at this point? Please read the conditions, Dan.
Katie, are you on the line?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Katie.
Yeah, that's fine, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please.
Okay, this is the principal planner for the city of New Brunswick. Should the board act favorably on this application, we recommend the following conditions of approval. Compliance with the terms of the DNR report dated October 19th, 2020, and the city engineering report dated September 9th, 2020 for this project. Submission of any necessary easements and/or cross-access agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing of same. Payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount calculated pursuant to Title 1624-160. Payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 1304 and 1308. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer as required. The applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting with the city engineering department. Compliance with the terms of the Bignell Planning Report dated October 14th, 2020 for the above projects. Payment of a redeveloper fee to the city of New Brunswick if required. Planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-approval reviews. Payment of all, any other fees due to the city of New Brunswick related to the development or use of this project. Payment of any outstanding taxes and water sewer fees. Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver. DNR Canal Commission approval or waiver. Freehold Soil Conservation District approval or waiver. Any other agency approval or waiver as required. Submission of engineering and/or architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing, if any. The approval of the Cancer Pavilion shall be conditioned on the approval of the parking and loading being provided on a separate site to be approved as part of a separate and subsequent application. All utilities and other site improvements be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments into the public right-of-way shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing into the public right-of-way is approved by the city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant will cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Tracking pad shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curves, and sidewalks as per the direction of the city engineer. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final site plan approval, and there are no variances required as part of this application, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Katie. I'm going to ask once again, do any board members have any questions that they want to address to the professionals at this time? Or any concerns in general, comments?
This is Bob Cardica.
Yes, Bob.
I'm sympathetic to some comments from public attendees suggesting that a traffic safety study be developed. Is the applicant amenable to developing such an analysis as part of its, I would say, final plan approval?
Mr. Cardica, in the hearings that you're used to, I would lean over and speak to my client. Can you just give me a second so I can reach them remotely?
Of course.
The public was limited to the time to speak? Why are we waiting on this guy?
All right, Chuck, you know what you're going to do?
Yep, yep, okay. Thank you, thank you for your patience. It's not, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's not an easy, because, because we don't, you know, unlike, unlike the traffic impact study, we're not really sure what, what standards we would be preparing towards. So, while, while we certainly appreciate the concerns over, with respect to safety, and we believe that the, our site plan has been designed with that, with that being taken into account, and the, the traffic impact study meeting the requirements of the city's ordinances, I think what we propose is the type of condition that, that is not uncommon, that we prepare something that mutually acceptable to the board's professionals. We, off-site traffic conditions are not, as stated by, by Mr. Itel, off-site traffic conditions are not an issue to be taken into account in site plan approval. That is, the law on that is crystal clear. I, I think what we propose is to do something like, take a look at bicycle striping, sidewalk width, corners, visibility, accident histories, and so forth. But we can't agree to something that, to prepare a report that would, that whereby we would leave the benefits of New Jersey law relating to off-site traffic. So, it's difficult to formulate the exact parameters of a condition right now, but, I guess I'll throw that out, and Mr. Itel, maybe you have, maybe you can, you know, bring some clarity to that.
Sure, Mr. Cardica, the, maybe we can get a little bit of clarification from you. What, what is the study that you were looking for in terms of safety?
So...
As Lebleng has indicated, and as I...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me try and elaborate on this. I, I understand, Mr. Lebleng, I think I understand where you're coming from on this, that it's not customary to prepare such a, it's not required under municipal land use law, perhaps, for this to be part of your application, and I, I get that. And I, you know, I, myself do not know exactly what, you know, what, what would constitute a traffic safety study myself. I don't doubt the analysis that was done by your very competent traffic engineer, but at the same time, I'm looking for perhaps some assurances, if that's possible, that the approval of this project, what, you know, will, will not be detrimental to, to residents as well as visitors to the city as a result of even the, the minimal increase traffic that your engineer says will result. So, I, again, while I can't, don't question the, the analysis of your engineer, you know, I, I am a little bit concerned that the increased traffic could be a detriment to safety, and I'm looking perhaps for some assurances that those would be minimal. You can't say they'll be nonexistent, but those would be minimal. Is there anything that you could recommend that, that you might be able to provide as a condition as part of the board's approval?
Mr. Cardica, if I could jump in real quick. As Mr. Lebleng had pointed out, one of the concerns in his doing, his job representing his client, is that under the municipal land use law, and more relevant under our ordinances, the city ordinances, there's no requirement for this type of a study, so...
I get that.
...that becomes important. Having said that, Mr. Lebleng, may I inquire as to whether your engineer has already performed line of sight for the ingress and egress to the Cancer Research Pavilion patient drop-off area? Because we can consider ingress and egress to the site. We can't consider off-site traffic conditions, however. We cannot consider those.
I understand.
I can tell you that, as part, as part of Mr. Roche's testimony, he did discuss visibility of signaling and so forth, that, that adjustments to those that need to be made in order to make the area, you know, immediately, immediately adjacent to the, to the hospital safe. You know, safety at, at other intersections in the city, while, of course, of substantial concern to, to everyone involved, is something for the, the city through its public safety programs to ensure occurs. And if there, if, to the extent there is a marginal increase in traffic in this area, that would, you know, that's, that's something for, for the city to, to take care of. It, I'm, I'm trying to, I, I don't want to be uncooperative, but I don't want, but I don't want to create a, an obligation that becomes so open-ended that it's impossible to me. Would something like agreeing to a review of site safety with the board professionals, the city engineer, the police, and as a, as a commitment we will undertake, would, would a condition along those lines meet, address your concerns?
I think it would, yes, I think it would.
Mr. Lebleng, so we're clear, the, the board cannot impose that condition on you, you can volunteer, and we can make it a condition of an approval.
I, I understand that, and that, that I think is something that, you know, we would, we would do absolutely voluntarily. It's a good idea across, no, no one is encouraging unsafe conditions. So, that, that is, that is a condition that we would agree to, to review, review the site safety issues with those, with that, that series of, of individuals.
Okay, I think that sufficiently responds to my question.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for your patience, and we'll let you just figure it out.
Do any other board members have any questions? Okay, hearing none, I just want to make a little statement myself. I just want to thank everybody for their time and interest in this application for the Cancer Institute Pavilion. This is an exceptional project, suited for the designated zoning district, and in accord with the master plan in the redevelopment plan area. It also creates job opportunity and educational opportunities for the community, and a positive economic impact as a whole. In addition, there are, in fact, no variance attached to this plan. The design is pristine in structure and functionality, offering state-of-the-art patient care and research facilities for cured-for cancer, cancer which is second only to heart disease as one of the leading causes of death in our country. I support this application, and I applaud the positive impact it will have on our community, the state, and beyond. With that, I will ask for a motion.
Way to ignore the community.
I'd like to make a motion.
Is there a second?
Okay, you let's go.
What was the, what was the, what was the motion?
Bob, Bob made a motion for approval.
I did make a motion for approval. I, I want to make a, a statement regarding, regarding my motion.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry for the confusion. I, I'd like to move that we, for the reasons that I previously raised, the, my reluctance, my reluctance to approve this without a full understanding of the, the parking facility, power structure, and other facilities associated with this, that the board consider preliminary site plan approval... that the board consider preliminary site plan approval only at this time with the condition that when the applicant seeks final site plan approval, that this include the parking facility and other structures and functions required by the cancer center, including signage, which was not addressed at all, I don't believe in any of the application materials. And again, I'm also pleased with the voluntary consideration of some addressing safety in cooperation with the city. I, I was kind of a rambling motion, but I think this is, may be consistent with Mr. Ital's second or middle option for board members.
Thank you, Bob. I now have a procedural question for you, Mr. Ital. If he wants to seek prelim- a motion for preliminary, and what if other board members want to seek a motion for preliminary and final?
As there's a pending motion for preliminary approval, then that would be open for a second and a vote. If there is a second, another motion could follow, fails without being seconded.
And if it fails, then there could be a motion put forth for, for final and free, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Ital, did I kind of properly characterize my motion, consistent with your second option?
That would be correct. Mr. Liebling, the only additional thing that I see is signage details. Did you see anything else?
Yeah, just a que- just a question about that. We, you know, we would, we would prepare our, our signage applications in, in conformance with the, in conformance with the redevelopment plan, and, and to the extent incorporated the ordinance. And our thoughts and the way we responded in our comment letters was that we would come back to the board with that only in the event we would seeking signage variants. Otherwise, I don't know that it's, you know, it's necessary to present it to the board.
I'm a little confused. So, you're saying that if it's consistent, consistent with ordinances, there's no reason to come to us with a signage plan? Is that correct?
I, 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 I believe that's the case.
Right. Mr. Cardica, if a, let's, let's take this out of the context of this applicant, but let's say that there's a storefront that wants to put up a sign in the city of New Brunswick. So long as that sign conforms with the sign ordinance, the city's ordinance, there's no need for them to come back to the board to get signage.
Okay. All right, thanks for the clarification. I thought I had seen somewhere in the application materials provided that there would be a signage plan. But I might have been wrong about that.
So, Mr. Cardica, if I understand you correctly, then it would be a motion for preliminary approval with the conditions that, that Ms. Pennello read onto the record, and the voluntary condition that Mr. Liebling had put on the record?
Yes. And again, that the, the final plan include the parking facility and, and other structures and functions required by the cancer pavilion.
I think we just need to clarify that, because this, the application before you now will not, you know, will not ever include the, the garage. We're not amend, won't be amending this application to include that. It is a separate application, separate applicant.
Okay.
Certainly understand what Mr. Cardica is trying to achieve, and, and we agree to the objective.
I think so. I think at the time that we would address final site plan approval, we would also address, even if it's not part of this application, even if it's a separate application, that that would be considered at the same time.
Understood.
I've got that condition down. Madam Chair, I believe that there is, there is a motion that's pending.
Yes. Is there a second to that motion? I'm hearing none.
Is there a subsequent?
Is there another motion on the floor? That motion is, does not carry.
Second for the preliminary approval?
Oh, I'm sorry, there is a second.
Okay, now there is.
And that motion was, the second was from whom?
Dale.
Dale.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. I'm, I'm sorry I didn't recognize your voice. So, Madam Chair, at this point, there would be a roll call vote?
Yes, Dan, can you please do that?
Certainly. Yelitza Checo?
Yes.
Dale Vickers?
Yes.
Suzanne Sikora Ludwig?
Yes.
Ryan Berger?
Yes, my apologies.
Bob Cardica?
Yes.
John Petrolino? John Petrolino? Star six, you're muted. I don't know if he's still on the call.
Five votes is a quorum for us anyways, is it not?
Mr. Ital?
It, it is. However, let's just make sure that he's not temporarily dropped off because of internet.
John Petrolino? You are on the phone, star six. Mr. Ital?
Yes, Mr. Petrolino is dropped off, so we will put an asterisk next to his vote. As an eligible vote, but due to technical difficulties, he was not here. Mr. Liebling, you've received preliminary approval with conditions?
Thank you.
Next, we have items for discussion by the board. Does, do we have any items for discussion by the board? And I, I don't believe we have anything on the agenda for that. And now we'll open up the floor for public comment.
Once again, I will be taking names in order from A to Z. Anyone who would like to speak will, will allow against, I believe, three minutes of public comment. Is that correct, Madam Chair?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
All right, um, anyone A's? Any for A? B?
Yes, Jean-Luc Bourget.
C? D? E?
Uh, yes, Riley Denbow.
Yes, hi, name?
Uh, Riley Denbow.
Can you spell that? I can't hear, it's a little staticky. I, I, yeah. Can, can we try that one more time? I literally can't, can't make it, what you're saying. I really apologize.
That's okay. It's, uh, R-I-L-E-Y.
R-I-L-E-Y, Riley?
Uh, D-E-N-B-O-W.
E, E-N-B-O-W?
Yeah.
Riley Denbow, okay. So we'll have, on for due, right, E? F? G? H? I? J? K?
Charlie Cradaville, I'll take fifteen minutes. Just kidding.
L? M?
Danielle Moore?
Noted. N?
All right, also Andres Moreira, M-O-R-E-R-A.
Okay.
Okay.
Brian Goulas, I dropped off, oh, connection, sorry, sir. Loaded. N? O? P? Q? R? S? So, someone else, Linda, I, I have you, but someone else spoke up. I don't know if they were trying to get on the list.
Sounded like Miguel.
Miguel?
Miguel?
Yes.
Last name?
Romero, R-O-R.
Romero, okay, got you. Romero. S, T?
Yes, Art Bourget.
U? E? X? Y? Z? Is there anyone we missed?
Yeah, D.
You said D?
G, Gonzalez.
Gonzalez, okay. All right, anyone else? Seeing none. I believe our first is Bourget.
Yes, hello. Hello, can I be heard?
Yeah, your clock's running.
Okay. I have to ask the nature of this section for a public comment. Unfortunately, comes with the territory of going first.
Arndt?
I'm here.
What, what is, what is the exact nature of this section? Is it public comments or? Excuse me, what is the nature of this comments section, please?
It is public comment, period, for any matter other than pending applications, any other matter.
Any other matters, though not related to the entire Lincoln Annex Reed Development Project, is that correct?
If you wanted to make comments about that, that's fine.
Oh, okay. To reiterate what my fellow concerned citizens have been saying throughout the night, the whole plan is just inconjurable. Certain significant details have still not been really made public. It feels like we're being blindsided at like every other turn here, with plans to add the parking deck and the power plant. It's, to be honest, bewildering. I would like to echo and reiterate my fellow citizens' concerns about the racial justice aspect of this whole thing. It is, forgive my harsh language, but cartoonishly evil. To really, when you really take in the whole picture and project, and I have to ask the council, like, do you truly not see how backwards this whole project is? Are you pretending to not notice because of the nature of the interests that the council is beholden to? The, the corruption is unreal. The lawyer for this project himself has said that he has a conflict of interest, and yet he still stands on this project? How can that even be? It's just, so many aspects are just flustered. I, I, even if I had ten, twenty minutes, a whole hour to talk about this, I don't think I could get every point off across my mind. We're really going to send seven hundred and fifty primarily black and brown kids to the most polluted ground in town, ripping their school from right out from underneath their feet, while we put a power plant and parking garage in there too? Are we expected to tear up every single city block, every prime a corporate interest has a pet project?
That's fine. Next up is Denbow, or Denbo, I apologize.
Uh, hi. On a similar vein that he was talking about, um, pretty much, yeah. Everything has already been said already. It's probably a racist, greedy venture that seeks and values profits over the lives of children. And it seems like the public doesn't have any say in what's happening. They vehemently were against it, and yet somehow still it got preliminarily approved with people gunning despite the claims of racism, despite the claims of, like, it's just, it's mind-boggling. It seems that no one on the board really cares about the issues actually being discussed, and they're just lost in the dents. I don't think anything could be so that would change their minds since they've already been convinced by the lining of their pockets. Uh, I cede my time.
Thank you. The, the next speaker is Gonzalez.
I'm here. Hold on, let me turn my camera on. Can you see me? Yeah, so I'm really tired, and it's been a long day. I look terrible, but I want you guys to see me because, as is stated before, this is a racial issue. And so I want you to see the face of a, of a brown indigenous Mexican, because these are the kids that you, whose lives you're affecting. And I, that's why I want you to see me. I, I envy these kids. I was born and raised in New Brunswick. I went to school there since I was four years old, and they had start programs all the way through high school. And I grew up with similar officials, sitting members like yourselves that did not care about people that looked like me. It's just deeply disturbing that you could see, you could sit in a seven-hour call with people saying, showing their dissent for this, and then you just don't care. And then again, a second time. It's just, it's really deeply disturbing. There's no, there's no reason even to repeat what everyone's been saying about the shadiness of all of this, the parking plans not being available, the disturbing way you've been trying to squash the dissent, the conflict of interest. It's just ridiculous. And it's really sad how you try to wash yourself from the moral implications of your votes. You chose to sit on this board, and you carry the full weight of the implications of your vote. You can't hide from it, and you can't seriously think that we buy that you don't understand how important this is with what happened last time with a hundred people on the call, the seven hours, and then now. There's just no way you don't understand how serious this is. And I don't understand why you would think that preserving, I don't know, what, your jobs, your careers, why is that worth doing what you're doing? I just don't understand it. This is, people are on this call, and we're all tired, but it's okay. We're gonna go to sleep with a clear conscience, because we know that the things that we're doing are not gonna affect the entire course of people's lives. That's what you're doing. What you're doing is gonna affect the entire course of people's lives in the community. And it's been, I'm twenty-five years old now. And it's been, I'm twenty-five years old now. I have now lived in New Brunswick for two years. And as much as I love that community and the culture there, I would not wish for my own nephew to go to those schools because of what's happening here. It's just so sad. And by the way, I don't live in New Brunswick anymore because it's just too expensive. And I know that's what you're trying to do, just push people that look like me out. Um, you can't hide from it anymore. Everyone's been saying it on this call. Um, it's a racial issue and you can't seriously look me in the face and tell me that you don't know that. You just can't. And these calls are on social media. It's public record. Everyone will know that people have been telling you this and you're still gonna go ahead and approve upon them, do a preliminary approval.
Ma'am, time.
You can't hide.
Next up is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Yes, uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, I, I wanted to ask for the record, could I get the uh voluntary condition uh that was added? What is the text of that gonna say?
Just put away my, that's Charlie. I'm sorry. Can you stop his clock?
Yes, of course, of course.
Okay, the night is young.
Well, Charlie, why don't I just get that to you in the morning? Trying to figure out where I wrote it down.
I think it's extremely important.
Mr. Cradaville, do you, do you wanna, do you wanna see, uh, not cede your time, but do you want us to move ahead and then come back to you?
Maybe, how about this, I can move ahead with some other comments and questions and maybe by the end of it, we'll have this, so.
Let me tell you the voluntary conditions, Charlie, I'm sorry, found it. The voluntary condition, one is that the applicant will meet with the city uh for uh site safety review. Uh, another volunteer, uh, I'm sorry, not voluntary, but a condition of the approval uh that no final will be granted unless the garage is.
Now, see, what, what was that? No final will be granted unless?
Preliminary final for the garage.
Preliminary and final for the garage.
Those are my short.
Okay, um, uh, I'll just, uh, you know, uh, repeat that I am definitely uh concerned about the process here with the uh, application moving forward in any way without at least having on file for review the plans for the parking garage. It's one thing, uh, you know, to, to say we're gonna have the two hearings separately. It's another thing to say we're gonna have the two hearings separately and you don't get to see what the second one is gonna be until after we're done with the first one. So I do wanna understand a little bit of what the difference is between preliminary and final site plan approval. And if you can tell me, um, you know, what the future holds for this application, given it's only gotten the preliminary? Will there be a, 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 will there have to be additional hearings, testimony, public comments? Or is this just something where, uh, you know, they can come back and all you have to do is take the votes?
Don't know if they're gonna be, so can't, I can't opine on that. We don't have that application.
Sure, sure, but for this one where they've gotten the preliminary but not the final, um, what would the final look like? Would that be another hearing where the public gets a chance to be heard and make arguments or?
Don't, don't, oh yeah, Charlie, I, I don't know what they're gonna put on.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, this is uh really uncharted territory here and I'm, uh, you know, I, I will say that I am.
With due respect.
You know.
If you don't know what it is, it doesn't make it uncharted, it just makes it something you have. Preliminary is done, done all the time in other municipalities.
I, I am aware. I'm a, I'm a creature of New Brunswick and I've never seen it done here separately. So I'm just asking how it would work and uh, you know, I, I do, uh, I, I.
Just like the municipal land use law requires us to do it, that's how we have to do it. Can't, can't do it a different way.
Okay, well, I, I will say that I'm disappointed that the board moved forward without anyone asking if the developer would be willing to agree to that condition I had proposed, which was the, the most reasonable of conditions that, that an appropriate relocation of the school would take place and the school would be built and the school would open before demolition and construction would begin. And I think that that was something that at least they should have, it should have been asked and should have answered. Of course, when I tried to ask he, uh, the applicant's counsel said it was inappropriate to, for me to be asking him. But no member of the board asked that and I think that the most fundamental thing we need to do is look out for the communities we already have here in our city. And one of those communities is the Lincoln Annex School community and to uh, uh, not uh preserve that uh, or, or at least fight for those interests uh by getting, uh, by securing a, a, a meaningful promise from the developer that they'll uh actually deliver the school first. Without doing that, you know, this is all uh problematic. This is all uh not in service of the community. Uh, if we're not looking out for that, that most basic thing of, of the people that are gonna be displaced, let's, let's make sure we get something for them. That was not done tonight. I suggested it. I've, I've tried to fight on this for a long time and I'm, I'm, uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna continue to and I'm gonna encourage everybody else to continue to. I'm very proud of everyone uh who's been speaking up and, and, you know, I, I had, had expectations that the board could do better and you can do better, withhold the final approval until a new school is built.
All right, uh, next up is Kulas.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, first to start off, this is, um, I learned a lot tonight and what is really alarming to me is that a eleven, twelve story structure, by the time it's maybe done with towers and signage, whatever, we'll just go with eleven, can really just be narrowed down and analyzed to a couple square bo- blocks without any real consideration to the um, city at large, the county at large. It's actually quite scary. I hope that legislators, you know, look at this. I, I think another thing I hope legislators look at is that we have no, apparently we have no standards for public safety i- as far as um having a uh safety test done, that there apparently a traffic safety track, uh, traffic safety report apparently just has, doesn't exist. There's no, it's not that it doesn't exist, just there's no level of standards. And we have pretty much standards primarily in all fields of work and, you know, that's really alarming to me. But uh, the other thing I wanted to note is that we still haven't really gotten clarity as far as the heliport. I think three weeks ago I asked that in the last meeting and they said that they had just applied. So I'm assuming applying to the FAA that that application is still pending. And if I'm not mistaken at the last meeting, they told me that it would be about forty-five days till they got a, um, you know, a response on that. So that's a whole nother piece that I think is being left out, but is a very serious piece. Because again, the heliport that's bringing uh people who are in urgent need, crisis need to the hospital and if they don't have a sufficient route for that helicopter to land properly, you have to take in weather conditions, everything, signage with far as lettering, you have another very big problem on your hands. So, and um, finally, uh, I recall at the New Brunswick Board of Education meeting, there was a young woman who spoke uh about the difficulties that she had at Middlesex County College because she attended uh what is, you know, the, the Lincoln Annex School, um, Forty Van Dyke. All right, she explained at that Board of Education meeting how much she fell behind in her uh studies and everything as far as trying to learn in that environment. And when she went to Middlesex County College, she really struggled. And I understand that. I identify with that because I switch schools all the time. And by the time I went on to higher education, I myself was lacking in certain uh studies because I didn't have the capability to learn in the environment that was provided to me. So it, thi- this is so big. I mean, this goes back to the Board of Education. This goes back to our state legislators because again, this is alarming that a giant project like this can be built but only analyzed at such a uh very minute circumference with no relation to the.
Mr. Domingo?
Yes? Yes, Madam Chair?
I was just asking, who's next?
Oh, Ms. More, uh, Ms. Moore. Ms. Danielle Moore?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I, I, I would say, just speaking from the bottom of my heart, you all ought to be ashamed of yourselves for putting these kids in danger. Like I said, if you don't live over here, you don't see what goes on over here, how dangerous it really is over here and the risk that you're putting at these children, where what, being snatched up, getting hit by a car? What, getting cancer? It'd be something you regret for the rest of your life. And I'm saying that as a victim, where I suffer from safety issues because of this city and I know money does not take away the pain or will money bring someone's life back? And like I said, due to where none of you are following, do any traffic safety situations? Like I said, you will regret it for the rest of your life because what you're doing is just putting seven hundred and fifty children in danger. How Defco is lying saying, where he wrote the story to Mr. Chuck O'Donnell. Oh my, they can't do the, the Fern Mall because of COVID nineteen. Then how on earth are you gonna do the cancer center with COVID nineteen? A bunch of liars and like you said, most of you are not people who care about New Brunswick. You're just evil. Don't listen to anyone. All you do is just say yes, 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 because you don't care about anyone else's safety. And like I said, it really hurts to see that being due to where I'm a, I'm a victim. Like I said, wow, how the city lied. Oh, we won't put any money in it. Oh, you're gonna have to play for, pay for plenty more crossing guards. What, plenty more signs? What, plenty more police officers to keep the drugs out the area? Who's gonna build the wall to stop the kids from crossing the tracks? Wow, you done had two people killed already within the last three months by a train in New Brunswick here. So like I said, you don't care. And like I said, sure, my child doesn't go there, but believe me, I respect and care about any child as my own. And like I said, you all will regret what you're doing and the Lord is watching you where you do not care. Oh, and like I said, it, it is very heartbreaking. Let me with you, uh, Mr. Corey Ludwig and the lawyer, due to, oh, yes, yes, you just wanna hurry up and get through. Oh, yes, yes, okay, your time is up. Believe me, like I said, oh, you're a person who doesn't like to hear the truth. But like I say, and like I said to certain people at city council meetings, oh, you will regret your evilness. Thank you.
Danielle, that's time, thank you. Um, next is Moreira.
Oh, hello, sorry, uh, just had to unmute there. Um, so yeah, just, uh, I'll just, I wanna reiterate, uh, I mean, what I said before. I mean, this, this kind of process, going ahead with approval of this, even if it's just pre- preliminary, I mean, just, just know that you're being part of this, of a, of a systemically racist machine. You really are. And, yeah, I, I, if, if you support this, you ought to be ashamed of yourself from a very human level and, and, and I hope you change your mind. I hope you can join us at least in voicing this approval. I mean, it's, it, this is just nonsense. I, I I'm just ashamed of you guys. I really am, that, that you cannot see the damage you are really doing to the community. There's the nerve to say, oh, this is gonna bring in jobs, this is gonna be good for the community. Oh, I, I forgot exactly what the, the lady said e- earlier. Um, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but you can say that and either you, you are completely ignorant fools or you're cowards or you're being predatory at the end of the day. And that you can say that, that this is somehow good for the community, that, yeah, sure, a new cancer center. But you know what? The people that are gonna be affected by this negatively, okay? They stand a lot, like, the, the people in the area that are being displaced stand a lot more to lose than, than Robert Wood Johnson or, or, you know, God forbid, some other frickin' hospital or something that can still serve the same needs, you know, that they take up this mantle instead of Robert Wood Johnson, you know, and that they can just sacrifice their pride and their pocketbook for just a little bit, you know, just, just to benefit the frickin' community. Okay, sorry, I'm going off, off script here, but uh, I just, this should be something that, that, that should be done in the interest of, you need to take up a holistic approach here and, and know that this is gonna hurt the frickin' community if you go forward with this. It really will. This is gentrification. It benefits no one in the long run. And frankly, if you keep going, this kind of attitude of just going on ahead with this and just burying your head in the sand, this is the kind of attitude that leads to the kind of crap that you, that you see in Weimar, Weimar, Germany back in the nineteen twenties. Not, and this is not hyperbolic here, all right? So you guys are complicit in, in a kind of fascism that this country is falling victim to. And just think on that, chew on that fat for a while, whatever, okay, just whatever. I, I'll, I'll shut up now. But, yeah, please listen to the frickin' community and, and do what's right for Christ's sake. Okay, I, I'm done.
All right.
Hello? And the other people mute themselves, please? There's a lot, there's a lot of noise.
One, two. Yeah, I'll, uh.
Sorry?
Yeah, we took care of it.
Okay, so basically I just wanna comment, continue commenting on, on what I was saying about the uh Development Corporation in this town. I think the Development Corporation has taken an approach where they're building a lot of buildings that are not necessarily building, like affecting the community. Like if you look at buildings like The View or you look at buildings like The Verb or things like that, things that are not designed for the community that lives in this town. They're designed for the college students, they're designed for uh very wealthy people. I think a lot of people in the community will benefit from, you know, uh, you know, city inspectors uh check, making sure that the rental uh units in this town are up to code. I think the city will benefit from uh the homeless community being, um, finding someplace to live. There's uh, you know, an estimated two hundred uh homeless people in New Brunswick. And uh, the people, you know, that have the master plan are, you know, building, um, buildings for people that are from out of town and people that are, you know, uh, much well better off. So I think there's, you know, a, you know, a, a fundamental, um, democratic approach to that. Um, I think, um, I think, you know, uh, Defco through the, you know, through the years, even if you look at like the development of uh other properties, like for example, like the Heldrich, like the, or Heldrich, however you say it, like that hotel is not, uh, it, it, you know, uh, Defco built that uh basically not to benefit the community. That, that was uh something to benefit Johnson and Johnson. Uh, I'm sorry, not, not the Heldrich, uh, what am I, what's the, who the hell am I thinking of? Uh, the Hyatt, sorry, the Hyatt Regency. So it's not, um, so it's, it's not a democratic approach. And, and going back to what we're talking about, this cancer center, uh, this cancer center, we don't have universal healthcare in this country. So none of this, these services are, are openly free for any of the residency or there, or, or for anybody in the state. So like to look at this as a, oh yeah, we're bringing in jobs and this is gonna be good for the community. It's kind of BS. They're really just looking for their, their own pocket. And all the community's asking is for you to see how, like Charlie was saying, like where the kids are gonna be going or, or, you know, instead of sending them to an industrial part of town or going through a, a park that has a bunch of people overdosing, as Danielle has pointed out. Uh, and what is the response to this? Oh, you know, like, we, you know, we're, we're looking into it. I, I have a question though, like how does the, um, the safety, um, like issue come into play? Because like apparently like this enge- uh, the engineer that's on, that, that was being questioned, the traffic engineer, he did not have really anything about like the, the aspects of the sidewalks and of the uh, the bicyclists and all this kind of stuff. So where does that connect into the project? Is that like a totally different person? Or, or is that something that's gonna come up, you know, six months down the line after you started already building and then you're gonna be, oh, we forgot about this? Hello? Anybody there? Hello?
Still here?
Do you have any other comments, sir?
Well, I'm asking the planning board, uh, what is, how does the uh safety, you know, Well, I'm asking the planning board, uh, what is, how does the, uh, safety, you know, aspect that all the citizens, citizens here have raised about, about this? How does this happen? Is it somebody entirely different taking, um, uh, care of this or is this?
This town.
Together, like all?
Next up is, uh, Linda Stork.
Yes, hi. I, um, continuing along with, um, Mr. Marrera's line of, uh, of thought, I, I was thinking the same thing about how, uh, it was said that the safety, I'm not even sure why we heard that whole traffic report if it can't be taken into consideration. And it, and it, and as he pointed out, it also did not include the safety issue. But I mean, as far as like a redevelopment plan for a city that doesn't take, I mean, how are you going to have a redevelopment plan that doesn't include having schools in the neighborhoods? That doesn't take into account the traffic patterns that make, you know, life liv- livable, being able to move from point B to point A to, whoa, sorry, it's getting late. Point A to point B at a reasonable, you know, in a reasonable timeframe, um, and, and the safety of, of where we live. Um, and all these things that make neighbor, but it seems like the whole emphasis is away from neighborhoods. The neighborhoods just seem to be forgotten in this. It's building high rises, making downtown look nice. And, you know, don't get me wrong, I want to have a nice downtown too, but, um, building all this housing for, hopefully, I don't know if they're filled yet. I guess they're hoping that, you know, a number of wealthy people will come, you know, and occupy these, uh, these buildings. But what about keeping the neighborhoods nice and livable? You know, and, and part of a neighborhood is a school. So, yeah, at first it was, you know, Washington School gone and then now if, if this school is gone and, you know, Lincoln's, Lincoln's, I guess, going to fall down before anybody does anything about Lincoln. Like, I don't know, it's just, that was the mind. There does not seem to be a coherent plan here. And definitely not a plan that takes into account the community. I can, I can speak. I'm not, I'm, I can, I can speak for a lot of the, the children and the families at the school. They can't always like be at these types of things to speak. Um, many of them do not speak English. And also they cannot vote, but their children can speak English and will vote. So I just hope it's not too late by then to preserve, you know, some of the, uh, community and neighborhoods in New Brunswick and have that type of a livable city for families.
That's time, Ms. Moore.
Oh, okay.
Next up is, uh, Tarbus.
Yeah, hi. Um, yeah, it's a bit, it's a bit flabbergasting what, what, what I've learned and seen go on here. The idea that the planning board's hands are tied by statute, you know, statutes that were written by land use attorneys who happen to be legislators for the benefit of the land use attorneys and their, and their buddies who are developers. I mean, it just, stuff is just not reasonable. The idea that it would be illegal for you guys to, to vote no is something that, is really something that you should think about. Because the laws, when there's an unjust law and injustice going on, somebody has to stand up and take, and take the risk and take the heat for doing something that's not popular. You know, otherwise it's just cowardice. It's just plain and simple cowardice to go along with the sort of the powers that be. That's what happened in Nazi Germany, that people went along with the powers that be. And as someone said earlier, this is how things sink into fascism. And fascism is, one of the aspects of fascism is the, is the vilification of the minorities. And that's essentially what's happening here. Mr. Cora Ludwig, I mean, it, it was, it was appalling to hear you basically all bubbly and telling us how great this, this, this thing is. Again, not a syllable, not a word of empathy for the hundreds and hundreds of kids and families who are being displaced by this. It's like, as far as you're concerned, they don't even exist. That is racist. Plain and simple. Voting yes on this plan is racist and someone needs to stand up and, and show some guts and fight the powers that be. Other, rather than just continuing to protect your positions, protect your, your, whatever it is, your, your, your prestige because you're on the planning board, you're on the city council, big effing deal, right? Big effing deal. That doesn't make you a good person. Make, even, what makes you a good person is standing up for the least of us. And that's something that none of you have done tonight. And I'm very disappointed and it's actually disgusting. Good night.
Madam Chair, that was the last, uh, commenter.
Thank you, Dan. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion?
I move. Bob Cardika.
Second, let's check on.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you again, everyone, for your time.